Move into executive session.
Okay.
What about yours?
Tonight is September 17th, Wednesday, 6:40 PM. Calling our Cohasset School Committee to order roll call for attendance.
Aye.
Here.
Gina Stino present.
Paul Schuber present.
Mary McGoldrick present.
Paul and Yvani present. And we learned that we don't really need to do that because we all know each other. It's the last school committee function, but we'll do it anyway. So we have a cause to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining and strategy. And if we can have a, that is number two, actually number three, excuse me. I move the going to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If the meeting may have technical complications, bargaining and litigation position, the public and school committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a move, a motion that we will exit executive session and continue our regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will go into executive session now and it should probably be about, hopefully not longer than...
One hour.
One hour. Two hours. We'll return. Good evening, everyone. It's 7:25 on September 17th. Welcome to the Cohasset School Committee meeting. We just got out of executive session, which is why we're starting at 7:26. It says seven, which is our normal time. But we'd like to have a call to order and roll call. We can open the meeting with the roll call.
Yes, hi, Helene Lee, here. Gina Stino present.
Paul Schuber present.
Mary McGoldrick present.
Paul and Yvani present. Like to start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first custom is to invite people in the audience to speak who aren't already on the agenda for another matter. Is anyone in the audience that has any public comment to make? Okay, great. So of course, as items come up on the agenda, we'll have more opportunities to speak. So the first business matter is to approve the minutes of May 21. We can have a motion to approve the minutes. Move the, to approve minutes of May 1st, 2014 school meeting.
I'll second it, or hopefully Jane has some comments?
Yes, the first comment I have is, what happened to the May 7th meeting? Because we were supposed to have that at our last meeting. They were brought to the meeting two meetings ago and we put it off until last meeting, but they weren't on the agenda for the last meeting and they're still not on the agenda.
They're going back for the next meeting.
Great. There's a little confusion about that recording, but that's okay. So I don't have any comments on the public hearing minutes. But on the, the regular meeting minutes, on page two, under the Deer Hill Student Handbook and School Improvement Plan, I think that we should capture that Dr. Lee suggested the Destination Imagination Program might be a good fit for Cohasset. And the reason I'm requesting that this be added to the minutes is there wasn't a lengthy discussion held on that. And I think that it's, sorry, I have strange notes that I wrote, it looks like with the wrong hand. That particular program has a goal of learner engagement and the thought is that it spurs achievement and self-esteem. So I think that that may be a good program to look at. We did have conversation, Mrs. Deam has participated at length, so I think that we should capture that. Under fingerprinting requirements, um, on the second line, a new state law requires all employees in the district to be fingerprinted. Anyone hired during the 2013-14 school year has to be fingerprinted before June 30th. I think we should change that to must be fingerprinted before June 30th. Has to be, isn't as urgent to me.
Well, they were all printed, it's done.
It's done, that's great. That's great. And then also, we observed a moment of silence and remember you have spouses of two middle school teachers who had recently passed away. And I would like that included. And then I just, I have a question related to Park, but I don't know if we want to discuss it right now.
Maybe we can wait till that comes up.
Yeah, I was just looking for results on, in the updates and I know that there is information, more information. So we can discuss that later on the agenda. So that's all I have.
Great.
I will say that the, the recording cut out after approximately an hour and 40 minutes or two, maybe the, yeah. The meeting, I believe the recording was supposed to be two hours and 40 minutes and the recording only went for about an hour and 40 minutes. So the rest of it I did review for typos, but I can't say anything from, from the superintendent's evaluation on.
Right, it was a long meeting.
It was over at 10:02.
Can I just ask, you mean you didn't hear the superintendent's evaluation or after that?
I didn't hear anything after the Park update information. There was, the, the recording just froze.
So, so that might be a product of your technology because I listened to the entire superintendent's piece at my house.
Well, it was on the K-12 website, that's how I, that's how I accessed it.
I just went to YouTube, that's probably the difference.
And it is, well, it is a YouTube video, I don't know.
Right, it, but I did hear it, so it does function.
I even tried to slide it over and see if maybe I, maybe there was a problem in the middle and I could catch the end.
Yeah, no, it was working because that's how I picked up what was there.
Okay, so why don't we, I guess, have a motion to accept the revised minutes?
I make a motion to accept, uh, accept the revised minutes of the meeting on, what is it, May 21st, 2014.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Mary, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 And do we need to approve those separately, the public meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I make a motion to accept the minutes of May 21st, 2014, the public hearing, the, um, yes, the public hearing.
Related to school choice?
Yes, yes.
Just related to school.
Second. Second for Paul, all, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it's approved. Okay, so I guess now we'll get into the superintendent's, please, Superintendent Fattaldo.
So the, the first thing we have are gifts, we love gifts. And so I believe we have some guests from Shaw's and I'm going to let Dave take it.
We have in the audience, Mr. Paul Cicliano, he's the manager of Shaw's supermarket in town, Cohasset. And he is here to present, um...
His wife.
His wife, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
They are here to present a gift to the schools, well, the school committee of about $400.
Thank you very much for having me, first of all, I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be here, thank you Dave. I reached out to Dave a few, few weeks ago about making a donation, so We Love Schools program, the company started this year. So we're going to make a $400 donation and they're mailing the check directly. I told Dave it's supposed to be there by Tuesday, so I will follow up with him to make sure that he does receive the check by Tuesday. Shaw's basically is the second oldest supermarket in the country, over 150 years old. We have 18,500 associates and it's a pleasure to be here. We have some, a lot of folks with Cohasset that work the store and shop the store, obviously, it's a great community, we love it and we appreciate the time. And we also brought a cake for you folks, plates and forks and stuff, we have a case of cold water there.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Maybe we should go to the future with this ice cream.
Why don't you all go right in there so we have some good light?
Oh, no.
Sorry, I didn't take my brush in here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Get all the light, everybody smile. Can we just get my flashlight on, I think I need it. Excellent. Thank you.
Cold water, they're going to want to walk.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
You do have the best cakes.
Yes, indeed. Second that.
Give us one second so they get something.
Absolutely.
No, I know we got one, I just wasn't sure why I'm on there.
Okay.
You just don't have the cake.
Frosting on the face.
Well, that was, that's a very generous gift by Shaw's and very, very kind of them to do that. They're an important part of our community, so we appreciate that. Do you want to keep moving along with the Belize trip or...
We, we can keep, actually, Mrs. Pescador, Mrs. Pescador stepped up.
So you should accept, you should accept Shaw's.
So, um, we'll make a, if we can have a motion to accept Shaw's generous gift.
I will, I will make a motion to accept the gift from Shaw's from their We Love Schools program in the amount of $400.
Second. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye, Mary McGoldrick.
Aye, Helene Lee.
Aye, Paul Schuber. Aye, Paul and Yvani. All right, okay, well, that's very nice, we'll accept the gift.
And I have another gift, because I know you all love gifts. So yesterday, or the day before, I believe I wrote you because we were contacted by Rostand Productions because they are doing a filming in town, it was a cover story this past week on the news, in the newspaper. But nonetheless, they contacted us because they wanted to use our auditorium, which they did for exactly two hours. And in turn, they gave us a gift to the district for us to choose how we wanted to use it. We're hoping the committee will agree with what we're thinking. But they gave us a check today in the amount of $500 for the use of the auditorium for two hours. And that's also something that has to be voted on. I will tell you that they've already been doing work for the upgrade in the auditorium and it was amazing when I went in there. Aside from being very cold, the lights that we saw were fantastic and that's just the start. So I wanted you to already know that's happening.
And what is the name again of the company?
Rostand, R-O-S-T-A-N-D. I gave you a handout about the company, they do a lot of nonfiction work. The purpose of their stay here is they are doing a 10, I believe it's a 10-segment show for ESL learning for executives, mostly in Asia as Mr. Rostand explained to me. But it's for the purpose of ESL and they send the tapes over there for training purposes. And so they're, they had a storyline to them, I understand, because they were talking about, I guess from what I read in the paper and what I was told, about an Attorney General who lives in the house on Fair Oaks and so forth, and they had to do a presentation in the auditorium. And they really needed a, a real auditorium. So they did approach us and it was after school hours, they actually came at four o'clock today, so none of the students were impacted at all. So we were very excited.
Great, well, that's great, so if we can get a motion to accept the gift from Rostand?
I'll make a motion to accept the $500 gift from Rostand.
I'll second it.
All in favor, roll call.
Aye, Helene Lee. Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, Paul Schuber.
Aye, Mary McGoldrick.
Aye, Paul and Yvani.
And we're hoping that you'll let us, well, we know it goes into the gift account, we're hoping to be able to appropriate it either back into the auditorium or just facilitate the cover, the needs of the auditorium.
All right, the next item on our list, Belize trip.
Yes, so we have a group of folks, I gave you a handout that is dealing with the Belize trip, that they're coming to speak tonight. I'm not sure how many of you there are.
So first of all, I just want to thank the administration and school committee for their time this evening. And you may remember about two years ago, around this time, Ms. Humphrey and I were here to talk to you about bringing back the Costa Rica trip, Central American trips for STEM, for math and science. And at that point, we, I was talking about how in the past, for around 20 years, my predecessor, Mr. Magnusson, had run these trips for about 20 years, pretty much every other year to Costa Rica, Belize and back and forth. And two years ago, or one and a half years ago, we did take that trip with Cohasset students to Costa Rica. And it was just a 10 out of 10, I couldn't say anything more than that about that trip. And for me, part of it was, in the past, it had already been organized by the high school teachers with Dr. Philip McLaren from Eastern Nazarene College. So it was very much of a homegrown itinerary and didn't have a middleman. And part of that trip was to look at how Ecology Project International could do, give, being the middleman. And I have to say, I was very, very impressed. They handled so many things, for example, having a nurse on site with the kids, keeping the passports, just, that's just, you know, two out of 50 things that they did to make our lives easier, so we could be with the kids and work on teachable moments. So, so after that incredible experience, Laura and I decided that we wanted to go forward with it next, would be left-hand, right-hand, which would be, which would be a Belize trip. And naturally, the first thing we did was look at Ecology Project International because they had done such a wonderful job. And they actually did have a tropical island coral reef tour eco, ecology field trip program. But it was $3,500 and we had never reached those types, types of numbers before. Pretty much in the 20 years that it was offered here, it started about $1,500 and went to about $2,200 during that time, just normal kind of cost of living by year raises. So Laura said, "Well, when you went to Belize with Mr. Magnusson, where'd you go?" And I said, "South Water K," that was one of the big memories. It's off the coast, Belize is one of the countries in the world, one of the very few countries in the world that has an incredible barrier reef just right fringing on the shores. Literally, if you're standing on the mainland of Belize, the island that we were staying on, you can see it and it takes 20 minutes by boat to get to. It's not, you know, far off, it's a fringing reef, a bad type of barrier reef, a fringing reef and an atoll, all three different kinds of coral reefs. Anyway, so Laura found a company in, in what town, Massachusetts?
I'm trying to say Weston, but it's not Weston.
But they're in Massachusetts, IZE. And IZE...
Sherburne.
Sherburne, Mass. IZE had a program that suited us. And all of a sudden, the dots came, became connected with me because Dr. Philip McLaren and Dr. Magnusson had used IZE and we had stayed with IZE when we were in Belize back in the day of Cohasset. So Cohasset has at least a 10-year experience with IZE with a good reputation as a place that offers a marine ecological field study, primarily looking at coral reefs. And we're just thrilled to have found a program that will work for us. So you have a two-page, little brief summary of the itinerary. We would hope to leave on Friday before April vacation and be gone for the entire week of April vacation. So we're hoping that the most we would impact school may be a half a day at maximum. And then the, the other piece, of course, is the curricular piece. I teach marine science right now and have to say, and about same thing, about 20 years of offering marine science is the first time we've had, second time in 20 years, we've had two sections. We actually have 45 students currently enrolled in marine science right this minute. And they're juniors and seniors and that's 25% of the junior and senior class are in marine science right this minute, who've shown the interest. And Laura was just saying, there's actually a larger percentage because some of the current seniors took it last year. So there's a huge interest in that and one of the things I thought was interesting is a small anecdote, was this week when they were researching how to set up a saltwater aquarium for a rocky intertidal ecosystem, which is what we have here in Cohasset, like tide pools, for example. They started researching reef environments. Because if you type that into the internet and start doing research, that's what you find. So the kids are going to have this incredible awakening to see the connections between the tide pools that we all have played in around the coastline of Cohasset and then to actually snorkel in a coral reef. And of course, it brings into everything to do with the mission statement in terms of social and ethical missions. Because the kids are going to learn about coral bleaching and they're going to learn some of the techniques that we're doing today to try to maintain that habitat, that really endangered habitat. So if I forgot anything, Ms. Humphrey's going to fill it in. And then these are three students, we have Owen and Ross and Sarah, who are upperclassmen who have spoken to us about being interested in the trip. IZE recommends a maximum of 30 students. And I personally would like not to dissuade any child from the opportunity of going, but I do feel that we should give upperclassmen the first priority because they have the biology and chemistry background that's necessary to absorb the curriculum content that they're going to learn when they're in field. But by the way, I spoke mostly about South Water K, which is half of the eight, I think it was eight nights we're looking at, four nights at South Water K. And the other four nights are at Blue Creek Rainforest. So it's a rainforest jungle for the first four, four nights and then the coral reef ecosystem for the lap, for the second four nights. And interestingly enough, I did swim in Blue Creek when I was in Belize with Mr. Magnusson and Dr. Philip McLaren. And just in case you didn't know, Dr. Philip McLaren did pass away about six months ago. Yeah, he, he died asleep in Hawaii after a very, very rich, rich life, rich and long life. So he was a professor at Eastern Nazarene College who trained as a marine biologist who worked here prior to my experience. So the kids would be happy to answer, Laura would have, happy to answer any questions that we have, or I would. And the kids would be happy to answer any questions you might have related to the student side of this. And we're hoping to go, April vacation is about seven months from now.
I always have questions about it. Is there a limit on how many students she'll take?
So the, with the bus, the...
Sorry, I think it could take as 45.
Everything comes down to transportation.
Yes, so that we can all stay together in one group for the housing in the, at Blue Creek. There's really, we, if we just wanted to stay on the, at the coral reef the whole time, then we could take, I think, up to 90. But because of Blue, the creek and the rainforest, we can only have 45 kids. And then we would need six chaperones. But we're going to try, we're, we're hoping, you know, we get 30.
And one more question. Who would you propose to be the chaperones?
You and I.
But you're only two, you're only two. So if you need six, you know that 45 students are going to want to go to this.
Yes. So the whisper in my ear is, would you like to address that? Given our, given our past practice and experiences in the relationship among both of the women and the community and how well-connected they are, we are proposing that their spouses travel as, as part of the package because they are certainly gentlemen who know our student body and who can interact with our kids in a most appropriate way and thereby lessening the impact on the students who are not on the trip.
Okay, that's four.
Right, that's four of 30. And their goal is 30. If you end up at 45, we'll, we'll take it under consideration.
And then if it does expand to that level, you would come back to us and discuss it? We talked about that after the last little debacle, that it didn't come back to us when it grew exponentially and we had no idea of the impact that it was going to have in the building. So, and I realize this is only one day out of school, it's not an extension.
And it might not even be a day, it's just a transportation.
We're, we're shooting for the most it should be is we're, we're rooting in an afternoon or evening flight. If it should turn out that a 10:30 flight is $300 or $400 cheaper than a 1 o'clock flight, of course. But I think for, yes, why don't we agree that we will come back, if the number exceeds 30?
Thank you.
And then we can come back and revisit it so that everybody has all of the information.
Right, that's the most important thing is the communication.
If you need volunteers for the...
There was also a conversation that an administrator should go. Just in case.
Okay, so again, student athlete couldn't go on this trip, I thought this was disgusting.
I'm sorry for just announcing for the audience.
Patty Gillis, I thought everyone knew. 192 Jerusalem Road. Again, a student, an athlete would never be able to go on this trip. We thought we discussed that, maybe these trips could be held in June. And again, there is no choice about if this, if the trip goes exponentially over how many chaperones. I thought we decided that was, that that was concrete because we don't want the fiasco that we had last April.
Can I make a comment for that?
Yes.
Um, I had two kids and one, I think it was a junior, senior, they both went on one of these trips. One went to Costa Rica and the other went to Guatemala and Belize. And it was, they both were athletes. My daughter at the time was on varsity basketball and she talked to her coach. And it was a difficult decision, you know? She made the decision that she would go on the trip because of her interest in science. And I think that because she missed some of the practices, she might have not been able to start in the first game or two or something like that. But she knew that that was the ramifications of it. And I did talk to the principal at the high school at the time and he did talk to the A.D., but the A.D. left it up to the coach to make that decision. And, you know, then the coach called it as he wanted to call it. And he was not happy about it because she was a star basketball player. So it wasn't an easy situation. And, you know, things like this do come up and, you know, our family had to deal with it and that's how it went down. It was left to the coach.
But last year, the meeting you were not at, we discussed this and maybe these trips should be held in the end of the year because, you know, so, so Jimmy Gillis will miss eight days of lacrosse, I think that's, I mean, the street.
Last, when we went to Costa Rica two years ago, a girl came with us who's on the lacrosse team and now plays Division One. She was, she was recruited.
I have a Division One child.
Yes. And she just had to talk to her, she was a junior at the time, so it was a big recruiting time. And she just made, I think that's a valid point, she made the decision to go. Not everybody can always make the decision to go and, and that has to be decided by each individual family. But we have talked, I know that I've talked to students when we've had discussions about where to go and the type of trips that we like to, that I would, I like to sponsor and bring kids on. And one idea that I'd really like to do is go to hike Kilimanjaro. And for something like that, we have to go at the end of the school year in June or July because you have to go for a month.
Now, sign me up for that.
But when I talk to the kids, it's really hard for them to give up time. For one thing, I can't leave until school is over. So we can't really do like a, a senior trip and send teachers out when I select kids in the class for the end of school either. Because I, I'm sure you don't want that, because that's exactly what you're talking about.
Well, last year we met because they sat there for four days with subs and it was a disaster. They watched movies, there was two subs and it was stormy.
I don't think all of that's true, but to look forward.
So let's stay, let's just, yeah, stay on topic.
I think that, because what happens with the summer when I talk to kids is kid, students really want to work in the summer. They're working on their work, their job doesn't want them to be gone for a month. Their parents want to spend time with them before they're going to be going to college. So I think that that's a really tough time to go to. I think that we call those weeks vacation and they don't want it, like my family can't go away in February because my daughter's the lead soccer team, when she does that, and my son plays hockey. So April is our only time, or my only time, but I can go away from that. And it's different for every family and we're fortunate at the school that we have trips at both of those vacations. And if, you know, you choose to do sports instead, I think that is a personal choice.
When is the trip to Washington DC? Is that going to be in my son's lifetime, who's in secondary, how about the trip to New York? Now, before we take any of these outside trips to Belize, Guatemala, I don't know, where else, Kilimanjaro, are we going to get a Washington DC trip, are we going to get a New Year trip? That's, I brought up last year, so is there any pullback?
So let's put that on the agenda for the discussion, but right now, let's stick to the Belize trip if we could, please. And we'll take that question up, when is the Washington trip? I think we'll bring that up after this matter is, is settled. So the question right now, I guess you're posing is, should the trip be allowed to go in April or should it be moved to June?
Well, I just hope we get to International, like we just elected, we're going to Cohasset, go to International. And we can't get to this, you know, we can't get to Washington DC or to the UN.
Barbara?
So we already have had...
So we already have had a discussion with Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Demus and myself about DC and we have to choose a time when it's appropriate to match the curriculum in.
Let's talk about DC later.
Right, but the point being that I want to reassure Mrs. Gillis that there have been conversations and they'll continue, but at this time, it's not a fit. So that's why these folks are here for these trips.
I understand how you can go international and that's a fit, but Washington DC and the U.N. isn't a fit.
Let's hear from our student body.
We are going to, we can personally talk to you about that. It's, it's a conversation that we've all had and gladly we'll do that. It's kind of a shame.
I understand.
All right, okay, we need to keep this moving. We have a lot of people here for a lot of different reasons. Thank you for your comments, Patty. We will get back to them and circle back eventually, but let's hear from the student body. Is it Owen?
Yes, my name's Owen Caprinos, for those of you who may know me, those of you who may not. So we are actually all fall sport players, even Sarah here is a captain of the softball team. So it's, so that really is kind of a personal choice because you, it's either to you, what's more important, a scientific study abroad or what would be sports. For some kids, it is sports and for some it is the other. But also, I would like to say, like, going in June, I don't think would benefit the student body really because, you know, we have, like, we want to spend time with our families that are last summer years, seniors and stuff. But also because, let's keep in mind, it is an educational trip. Like, some of us are taking AP by, which would be related to the curriculum during this time. If you go in June, the AP tests are over, the courses are over, like marine biology and stuff, where this is really mainly to relate to. So going in June, it's less, I feel like, educational because it's not as late as the course, schools are almost over and that's basically my point. I mean, it's more the educational portion of it than the going away part. The distance really shouldn't matter. I mean, travel is travel, travel is a very eye-opening experience, but the main point is very well studying in a very well, or a good environment for you to do so.
Who's the moderator of the debate team? Because Owen on that team. Excellent points, thank you for your comments.
Can I say one thing too? I coach the boys tennis and that's a spring sport and I was just here last spring and I don't have my players play during my vacation in April. So that's the coaching decision to have certain sports. So some of the athletes don't have to make that choice because they look at it as vacation.
Thank you.
Could we possibly have the A.D. come to our next meeting and weigh in on the school sports issue during the school vacation week?
We certainly have.
Because he certainly oversees the coaches. You know, I think that that might be beneficial for this whole, for this discussion. And I, I have to say, I agree with Mrs. Gillis that we don't seem to be able to get to some trips in the United States that are pretty close by, you could get in a car and go to. But we do go to all these great, great destinations in foreign countries, which are educational experiences. But I, I'd like to hear from the A.D. and see what his feeling is. Because I will say that my own daughter went to France and I know that there were some teachers who had problems with that trip and the students being out of, for the wraparound time that happened. And some of the teachers really object to that. It's not just the athletics.
This, this particular trip though, at hand, sounds to not require any, and that's what we're talking about tonight.
Exactly.
I think it would be great to have the A.D. come on board to discuss. Patty raises some interesting points. The difference between international and domestic travel, as Owen stated, I think, travel's travel, so you're either out or you're far either way or here. It's kind of irrelevant to the point that Patty made. But why don't we decide, I think, tonight to, first of all, thank you for taking the time to be here, to take the time to run a terrific opportunity for students. Of course, it comes with, yeah, and of course, it comes with hard choices that you're all well aware of, it seems like, being student athletes yourselves. Do you, do you guys, the other two of you have anything you wanted to add or?
Just again, like Owen mentioned, I am the captain of varsity softball, so obviously I would be making a choice and I'm, I'm really, really interested in science, probably will major in biology. And I think, again, like a trip like this and seeing everything firsthand will be so much more enriching than just reading out of a textbook. And so, yeah, again, like it is a personal choice and I'm definitely willing to make that choice.
I'll say one last thing. I mean, even like what Dr. Yed mentioned earlier, actually, about coral bleaching, that was even on standard test I took recently in the ACT, so this is very practical, real-world information. And also, I mean, just to the point of athletics, like we're a school, we shouldn't be defined by athletics, obviously it's a big part, but, I mean, the purpose is to get, inform kids, make them better students, knowledge, prepare them for the real world. And I mean, we should really be based more on our educational stuff than athletics, although they do play a big role.
Thank you.
Just, oh, one additional comment. My son right now is studying Antarctica in the Arctic Circle. And one of the reasons why has to do with some of the trips that he went when he was in Kohasset High School, the skills he learned. He still relies on some of those very same skills when he's building an engineering contraption to catch first flow of snow, first year's snow in Ross Sea. And also some of the things that he, he learned in marine stuff, you know, when he's examining the ocean, you know, right around Antarctica and in the Arctic Circle. So the hands-on stuff for, for him was crucial and it all started here in this high school. So that's it.
Great, well, great. So again, thank you. So I think we need to make a decision as a board to approve the trip. So do, do we have a motion to?
I have a question.
Yes, Jean.
Shouldn't we have the athletic discussion before we make the decision?
I, I would say we can decide that. If we, if we would prefer to not make a decision tonight and wait for the athletic director, then perhaps the vote would be against approving the trip at this time.
What's the timeframe for?
Given that the trip is coming in April.
I think that the issue is that airfare, it's always going to be airfare. And we don't feel really comfortable, we discussed last time, sending some kids on some flight and other kids on other flights. We'd really like everybody to all be together. So the longer we wait for equal vacation, you guys all know, being parents, when you try to book a trip for equal vacation, it's hard to get affordable tickets. So the sooner we can do it, the better. It just might mean we might have to move our days, which is more time out of school. So that's, I think, the risk.
To me, it's not a deal breaker, whatever the A.D. decides, because I know our family did it, even though we had varsity player, you know, and, you know, we're the sport captain. So I'm in for making the vote just the way it stands. I think it's good to have some dialogue with the A.D. However, in the past, he's left it up to the coaches, each individual coach. So I, you know, I think he, he's going to probably say the same thing, you know, because he, in, in terms of that. Because when my daughter went to the A.D. after her basketball coach had an issue with it, the A.D. said, you go back to the coach and you work it out between you and your coach. So, and I can't see that the A.D. will change his, his viewpoint. So based on my experience, I would like to make the vote right now.
Agreed.
In that case, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the trip to Belize as described.
I'll second.
Second for Mary. Sorry, all in favor? Aye.
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 I'd like to abstain. I'd like some more information. There's another trip proposed the same week that could devastate the sports teams and, and create all kinds of havoc with these kids. I, I just think that more information is, I mean, certainly you have the vote, so you guys can feel confident in that.
Okay, so four votes in favor and one abstain.
It's not.
And, and one on voting. So the, the trip is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And again, this time we'll invite you afterwards to come to our, I know no one was able to make it last time, but we have a little slideshow and we ate cake from Costa Rica, tried to let you kids, so who knows what kind of treat we'll make this time.
You have five more chaperones here.
No, Dr. Schuler wants to go then.
I'm holding out for a most of them.
This way, someday it might work out. Thank you all so very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Take care, thank you.
So, so let's just make sure we do add, address some of the concerns from the audience. The A.D. comes to the next meeting and that we perhaps put for the next meeting, discussion about the Washington DC trip.
Paul, I brought that up because in the May meeting, I sat here at length and did discuss that maybe these trips, because we went too far, we had way too many days out of school on the last trip. So we discussed it, because you talked to Fay or you talked to all the schools, they go to end of school year. Because they don't go, they are, two weeks after March, they don't go, you know, they don't go, you know, to on the trip. So I know every kid in Kohasset was a private school, went, if they were going on a trip, they went in June. So that's, I don't mean to attack them, you know, but, you know, my kids dream of leaving this team, you know?
And then, and if I could just weigh in, I totally appreciate it because my daughter would most likely be in the same boat.
Yes.
A private school schedule and calendar is a little different than a public school. They're out at the beginning of June and there's a little more leeway there to play around with. So I think you just need to factor that in too.
Yes.
Hi, Ellen R., sixty-three-year-old pastor. I just have two comments. I think it's terrific that, you know, the spouses, the teachers going were given approval and I think it, one of the last times we talked about these trips, it was brought up, could parents go as chaperones? And the answer was probably not because of liability, but I think if we get into a situation where chaperones are needed, if spouses can go and are not liable, then perhaps parents could go as chaperones and not be liable. And the second thing is, I do agree that, I think our athletic director will, will defer to his coaches as he probably should in terms of what their policies are going to be, but I don't believe the spring schedule is set in stone. He would have some influence over how many varsity contests are scheduled for that week and maybe he could, you know, curtail that a little bit so that if student athletes want to go, they're not going to be missing out on a lot of varsity competitions.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea.
Okay. Just one additional comment. When my daughter, she, she missed practice, so that's what she was bench, she was two practices or something like that. But, you know, it was a coach's decision and she learned from it and, you know, she still had the same thing. It was very interesting because when she went to the university or college, Middlebury College, she was, they were going to bump her from JV across, varsity to across, and they told her she couldn't miss, she's a chemist, and she couldn't miss any practices for labs. And at that point, she made the decision to, to, you know, change, to stay with chemistry and that was the end of her sports career. But, you know, not all colleges are like that, you know? It's, it's not a Division One school. When you go to Division One schools, they're prepared for a chemist to also be a football player or whatever. But these are choices that kids make, you know, and they're going to make it in college as well.
So we're moving on to a discussion about the already-approved Guatemalan trip.
Yes, it's a trip. And actually, for the safety of our students, Mrs. Jordan is here to talk about the change that needs to take place in order for this trip to continue to happen.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the prior approval last winter of this trip to Guatemala. However, I am here tonight to propose a change of itinerary and the reason is, there was a recent violent attack on high school students and chaperones that occurred in Guatemala. This happened this past July. It was a small church group from Hamilton, Massachusetts. They were en route after a successful week of community service in the little rural town of Guatemala on the main road that we all take to Guatemala City Airport. They had two little minivans, we travel in a minivan that accommodates like sixteen or seventeen people. And what happened with this trip in Hamilton is one of the vans was pulled over, there was a carjacking incident, they were pulled over with guns and they were violently attacked and robbed. And so with that in mind, there is no actual travel stoppage from the national travel agencies in the United States to dissuade people from traveling to Guatemala, but just one carjacking experience like that is enough for me to say that we should not be traveling to Guatemala with Kohasset students at this time. I have had four successful trips in the past and it went lovely and my heart breaks that we can't go back with the same established group that we had with the language classes and with the same families we stayed with for now four different years in a row. So I did contact ACIS in Boston. This is the travel agency that organizes my excursion since about nineteen ninety-two. And they were very helpful in arranging a similar trip for our nine registered students, but this will be in Costa Rica, not in Guatemala. And what I enjoy about this trip is that we have this whole language experience and from the minute we get on the plane to the minute we get back, we're immersed in the language. They live with families that have been pre-screened. We have language immersion classes every morning, so they actually get some school credit and they have twenty hours of language classes. Then in the afternoon, they have interactive experiences that they do. And now since we're at a beach area, we're at Samara Beach, which is on the Pacific coast of Guatemala, I'm sorry, of Costa Rica. So we fly into Liberia and it's a two-hour ride. And actually, Dr. Tome was actually swimming with her husband there. They actually spent a week with student chaperoning and she said it was a wonderful spot and it was very lovely and safe and actually visited the language school. When I applied at Silver Lake, I traveled to Costa Rica and this was back in two thousand, so we're going back a little bit. I've been here now at Kohasset for ten years and I had a wonderful trip with ACIS. So I feel much more comfortable traveling with my nine registered students to Costa Rica this time instead of Guatemala. In Costa Rica, the activities they'll be doing in the afternoon will be a little different from the weaving and the co-ops that we will be visiting and the coffee plantations in Guatemala. What we will be doing in Costa Rica is we're doing much more coastal activities and in Spanish, we will be doing a cooking lesson, a dancing lesson, we'll actually have a kayak tour, we will be doing dancing. And then at night, one of the exciting activities, aside from like a big going-away party that they'll throw for us at the school, is we will have a camp tour of the rainforest from the zip lines. And I can tell you, back in nineteen ninety-nine, it was a little bit Willemberg, the idea of seeing Costa Rica right along with the two cans and the monkeys was a thrill. And there were twelve of us at that time and myself and one other student were the last ones to go on the zip line and you climb up the tree and they harness you and you just go from tree to tree. And we did eight different trees in the rainforest canopy and that took about two and a half hours and that was the highlight. So I'm, I'll have to check to see if it is the same spot that we traveled to back in ninety-nine, but it is a very popular activity. And ACIS does do language immersion class at Samara and they told me that is the most popular language immersion course that they offer in terms of student travel. And I was one of the few across the United States that would actually go to Guatemala. So we said, all right, join where most of the teachers are bringing the students to this resort. If this change is approved, the first thing I would do is contact the parents involved because they know nothing of this change. I will email them this evening, I'll have a meeting with the nine students next week, we'll get together and we'll see, is it okay that we now switch the registration from Guatemala to Costa Rica? There is a three, about a three-hundred dollar increase in price just based on the activities at hand. And that was one of the reasons why I chose in Guatemala is to try to keep the prices down and then fell in love with it once I had traveled there. Another thing I would do is actually open it up to the high school students to see if we could possibly get four, five maximum students if they are interested in joining us. And that would bring the trip to a total of fourteen students. We're traveling where we're not missing any days from school, Sunday to Sunday during April vacation, which is the nineteenth to the twenty-sixth. Let's see what else. And Jill Kelly has already signed on to chaperone. She chaperoned with me on our last successful trip to Guatemala. So that would be a very manageable group of me, of being very vigilant of my seven students and then Jill would have her seven students and we travel together, we're always together as a group. And then we fit comfortably in the one little minivan, which accommodates maybe sixteen people total. So I think that would be just more manageable in terms of traveling in a group. Let's see, just in, in closing, safety is my main concern and just the idea of me not wanting to put any of the students at increased risk is what's at hand here. So that's the reason for my coming tonight, see if we can make the shift so the students still get an experience, language immersion program abroad that they can't get in the classroom because they're living with the families and we're experiencing something together as a group. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have extra copies if anyone needs one.
So can I just ask, if there are students after you tell them about the change, if they decide they no longer want to travel on this trip, are they able to be refunded their money?
They will. They will with the, with, um, minus the registration fee of about three hundred ninety-five dollars. Depending on how much they have paid toward the trip of twenty-three hundred. So now it's just under twen-, it's about twenty-seven hundred now. I think the last trip is about twenty-three fifty. So I think minus the registration, it will be refunded. The thing is, ACIS is not canceling the trip I am. So if they had said, we, I don't know, we're traveling to Guatemala, then we would have hundred percent refund. But they are not doing that, nor is the State Department putting out a travel advisory to Guatemala at this time. So this is just my sense of concern.
I have a little trouble with that because the school is transferring the trip to another country and it's not, and then we're asking them to absorb that even if they don't wanna go to Costa Rica. Cause it's a possibility that, um, some of the children have gone to Costa Rica before, maybe even this place.
Right, yeah.
And I'm uncomfortable with them being penalized by a decision that we, as a school board, make to approve, uh, it going to Costa Rica. And I want us to think about how to mitigate that. It may not be a problem.
Yeah, I want that everyone will say, good.
Everyone might, yeah, then it's not a problem. But if it is a problem, I, I would like to know about that. Well, I think we should talk about it before.
And I'm willing to do fundraising with the students. I don't know how much that would defer dividing up by now.
My suggestion would be, um, obviously Peg didn't want to, um, jump the gun and interact with, talk to parents and students without bringing it to the school committee first. So now that she has shared this information with you, now it would be appropriate for her to sit down with the families. So perhaps the next step is, let's, let's worry about that issue if it, if there's something to worry about. So now that you folks know, now Peg can comfortably talk to parents and, to parents and students to see if people would be open to it. And then she can get a sense of, are there one or two students for whom that would be the hardship and, and an unreasonable expectation that they absorb that cost? And then maybe we can revisit it.
I'm not concerned, I'm concerned about the hardship. I get that part. But there's also the possibility that it's not hardship. They, they don't wanna go to Costa Rica. They wanna go to Guatemala. And here they're being penalized, the money for a trip they didn't sign up for.
Right.
You know, the hardship I told you.
I did ask ACIS. I said, can we offer this for the same price? I realize Costa Rica's more expensive. I've traveled with you for decades now. Let's make it the same price. And we said, oh, I would love to do that, but I can't because it's a different trip. So I tried to have.
The price isn't an issue in my concern.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, the pri-, price isn't an issue in my concern.
Yeah.
The concern is switching countries and expecting them to, uh, all be on board with the switching countries. And it could be absolutely nothing to do with price.
Right.
It's just, they signed up for Guatemala, we're switching it to Costa Rica. If you don't wanna go to Costa Rica, you still gotta pay the re-, uh, your.
Right, right.
I like your suggestion, that why don't we see if it's an issue? If it is an issue, we can discuss it further and see if there's ways to mitigate it. Is there, uh, also a possibility that if someone wants to drop out, you're looking for four or five other people anyway? Perhaps they can just swap and pay the registration fee once.
Right, yeah, I think that would make sense.
Yes, that's another good idea.
You know? So why don't we see if it becomes an issue? And then, and if you could let us know?
Sure.
The outcome next meeting perhaps?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And, and just my thing, I would just hold off, you know, like if it is an issue, be, I'd be assertive about the fact that they have to still pay the, you know.
Right, cause it sounds like there's multiple ways to address the problem.
Exactly, exactly.
It might be as simple as another student taking that student's place and swapping the registration fee.
I might get a, yeah, that sounds true.
But I certainly applaud you for your concern for our students' safety. I certainly wouldn't want them to go into Guatemala, no matter what, just because the price is the same and, you know?
It's very sad, it's very sad. Cause I was just there a year and a half ago for a wedding. Yeah.
And, um, I know that Guatemala City's been having a lot of trouble, but it's really sad, you know? They all live in a global community.
These are young kids. It's not as though I choose to go with my, my families, it's a different issue. But when I take other people's children abroad, they have.
Right, and it wasn't just the morale, they were physically.
Yes, definitely.
So you would need to move aside, wanna take a vote tonight to allow her to at least, you know, speak with parents?
Yeah, so we were just saying, maybe we just, uh, take a vote to, again, like you said, uh, allow you to entertain the option, but perhaps not, um, not formalize the switch until we hear about the ramifications for other people. But recognizing that it's, if we approve it tonight here, we're all probably in favor of it. It's just wanting to massage that potential issue regarding the registration.
Right, so I'll, I'll inform the parents, see how it goes and then get back to as soon as possible. Are they all going on and are all on board?
Yeah, they're all on board. It's not a problem. If one's not, you're probably gonna be able to get somebody to fill that spot. And I talked with the principal about it, you know? I just don't want anybody to feel like they have to pay for something they didn't sign up for. I think the principal understands that.
And basically, you'll open the enrollment somehow to the larger body? Cause you need that for those four or five more students?
Right, right. I'd like to just close it at four or five students maximum. Depending on any, yeah, additional. And then, you know, if that's okay, I could actually announce that this week.
So perhaps, would we say up to fifteen students?
Fourteen.
Nine plus four, five, round it up. Was it fourteen? Okay.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to, uh, revise the trip, uh, to, to a maximum of fourteen students?
I'll make that motion with the caveat that we're supposed to be concerned about that one issue.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, all passed. Thank you very much. Good luck with the communication.
Thank you.
And just one more comment. One of the reasons why I felt okay about the second trip, or the first one we approved tonight, is that this was already approved, just the switch wasn't. Was the fact that the first one that we approved, I went through my notes and I remember it was for only nine, ten students. If both trips, you know, were for forty students, I would have a concern about approving an additional trip. Cause I heard what Mrs. Estino said and, and that would be a concern to me, uh, that many of us going, yeah.
Fair enough. And the other thing that's, both of these trips appear to really not be taking any time out of the school year.
Correct.
Recognizing the fact that it does take away from potential athletic participation and other school activities that will be going on during that vacation.
But less so, it will affect teams if there's one trip that's only nine to fourteen.
Right.
You know, if they both were forty to fifty, that would be a huge impact. On sports and other things.
Right. All right, so, very good. Next topic.
Next topic is MCAS versus PARK. And in your packet this week, I gave you a number of handouts.
Yes, and I do hope everyone read the front page of the Boston Globe and that the city of Boston is entertaining going to the park.
Yes.
And I guess it's because the deadline is October first. So if they didn't get the guaranteed, they're gonna be on the, uh, if they approve it at their school board meeting, they would be, uh, wanting the park, but yet it wouldn't be a guarantee.
Not yet.
Cause they'd be on the waitlist.
Yeah.
Like we would if we approved it before October.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. And their reason for going for it was one that I did address. And that is the fact that it gives our students practice at taking a new test that, you know, is online pass instead of doing a dinosaur. But, and that was the, the reason that they gave the Boston Globe.
And I don't think it's their meeting tonight, I think, right now.
Yes. And one of the things that's been happening and that we've had the good portion of, Mrs. Deamis and I, we've attended several meetings already since August, right down even to today, where we were participating and the superintendents were discussing what's happening with PARK versus MCAS, what the future holds for education, uh, and where are we going with this? And so one of the things that we're concerned about in terms of PARK is the number of states that have dropped out of the PARK at this point. Uh, at this point, what is it down to?
Uh, the only state in New England right now is Rhode Island.
They dropped out?
MCAS PARK.
Oh, that has to be so.
All other New England states have smarter balance. Uh, I don't know, thirteen is exaggerating. It's probably a few.
Low fifteen right now. And before, it was supposed to be the whole country. So the numbers are dwindling. And the concern I have personally is that, uh, there'll be a change in leadership at the State House. And it could be a change in leadership at the state in the Lord of Edg-, in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I am nervous as interested as I was in doing the PARK in the spring, obviously watching the effects unfold throughout the summer and now into the fall. I have some very serious questions as to, will the PARK stick? And so we've been talking about it and we're feeling it's a little risky to jump over to the PARK right now. We have all the technology. That is not an issue. Mr. Vanel got the school ready because the push was on for the PARK.
Right.
But the reality is, we're not completely positive that it will hold. On the other hand, we also are well aware, if we choose to do the PARK, that where our ratings are, what the results are of that PARK, we are held harmless. So I know I had sent you an email earlier on that we are now a level one district, that our stake in the world there for educational testing is quite high. Um, not all of our neighbors are in that same situation. Many around us are still a level two. But we are a level one. If we go with the PARK, we will remain a level one automatically by virtue of having gone to the PARK. We're held harmless. If we stay with the MCAS, if we were to do poorly and come back down into a level two, then we become a level two. But then after that, we don't know if we're gonna be staying with M- MCAS, going to the PARK, going to smarter balance, or something else beyond that. So, uh, we're juggling a lot of balls in the air, trying to figure out which should we go with. And right now, we're feeling most comfortable with the MCAS because we really don't know where we're heading.
You, you refer to smarter balance?
That's the, what the other states are giving.
That's another, another test, yeah.
Another test.
Yeah.
We're not involved in that at all right now. It's not being entertained whatsoever.
Not in Massachusetts.
No. No, it's PARK is what's being entertained in Massachusetts. But we now, at this point, don't know. There's so many states that have dropped out of PARK. We don't know if PARK will hold any longer. And we are concerned about making that switch and then making another switch.
So the other states were offered the option for PARK?
How many states were originally in stuff PARK? It was about half and half originally.
Yes, for the bulk. Right now, when we're looking at smarter balance, New England would not be our competitors within the PARK. They are now smarter balance, with the exception of Rhode Island. They've already voted in, so there's no changing at that point. Uh, the states of Massachusetts and DC are undecided at this point. Um, New Mexico, Texas, they're more mid, you know, they're, they're spread. They're not a cluster of people in PARK. My big concern with PARK right now is not so much my concern with PARK as the benefit for MCAS at this moment because we have changed our math program. We are looking and examining our reading program. We wanna know the consistency of growth within envisioned math. That's my priority at the moment. We've been looking at the elementary levels, which will be affected. Grade ten will not be affected, grade ten will take MCAS until two thousand eighteen. That's not an issue. But when we look at our current curriculum and start looking at growth, another year of a common assessment would probably help us, given that there's no security with everything else. And, and that was also a consideration when we had our discussion.
Well, particularly since the math that we've adopted concentrates on mastery now, which it didn't before. I think that that's, that's something that you can measure. It's, it's, it's a very smart thing to measure that way.
And our new program has started in the middle school as well, so now we have the continuum. And when I looked at the new textbooks in, in the middle school, more than the elementary schools, the back of each unit has a section, has a page that says smarter balance address, PARK address. So regardless of whether we give PARK or not, we're getting that same kind of assessment within the units. And it's basically what I said, all along with MCAS. It's not the MCAS, it's the framework.
Right, right.
It's, it's actually the common core. If you do our job, we don't have to worry about either one.
Okay. And then one more question, which left my brain and it'll be back in a minute.
Now, as far as, I'm telling you.
No, because then I won't be. Oh, have you seen any examples of greater balance?
Smarter balance.
Smarter balance and PARK, so that you can compare? Because I know that we had some test questions for PARK. I'm just curious if you've seen any test questions for the other.
Not to compare. I've looked at them at Maine and I've looked at New York and had a smarter balance kind of assessment.
Sounds like breakfast cereal.
Yeah. What in the hell, and what is smarter balance? I never even heard of it.
A smarter balance curriculum is where it comes from. Meaning that all states would do a common assessment and have common frameworks. And that's really, I think, where that came from. But, um.
But is it based on the common core?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're all based on all of us.
Right, so why do they come up with two? Common core and then PARK?
Because I like my assessment better than yours and my publisher does a better job than yours.
So what ways are they different?
They're two different publishers.
That's it? And they're very similar?
I, I don't know. I haven't looked at the test questions.
And other states in New England have gone with smarter balance? Interesting. And we in Massachusetts don't have that option, correct?
Pass.
If we were to give the kids to take the option to do the PARK this year and there's no penalty, currently, we'd still go to level one, so it's still a level one. Then you had to go next year, at least in our case, we have one year under their belt. So our next year results, you know, I mean, the kids would have had it. There wouldn't be apprehension, nervousness. Cause I talked to a friend, one of us is a grade three teacher who's got to teach over at this school. And she said her kids, Elmer Hingham, gave them, they all got a little nervous. And she said, just like the other tests, our kids would have one year under their belt and that way they, when they're ready next year to take it, their result, their scores might, you know, reflect a little bit more, it reflects a little better.
Can we talk to the boss?
That's, that's one point.
If I can address that?
Please, that's a lot.
Yes, it might be. But are we looking at that individual one year? It's still not a high stakes test primarily until grade ten. And grade ten remains MCAS until two thousand eighteen, regardless of my decision.
Isn't that one school year, if I, cause I was at the meeting, isn't that one year that the kids take, it meant after two thousand sixteen, they take the PARK and they take the MCAS?
No, no, I know. They're never gonna be able to choose now.
Jane.
And I believe that the feeling in that last meeting when we discussed it was, okay, we, we get our kids ready to take, go from MCAS and take PARK. If it's not PARK for the following year, then, then the apprehension comes back.
Right.
Two years in a row because we're going to a different model, to a different test.
Or is that a possibility?
It is definitely a possibility.
Yes, totally. The state does not vote in PARK until, I think it's something October fifteenth, possibly.
Right.
After we want to.
And so we're being asked to make the decision before the state finalizes its decision. And that, that's been the bone of contention that we have. They've, they've not said we're going to PARK, are you in or out?
So, so I have a question. So if we were to go with PARK and then the state votes against it, we would default to MCAS?
Depending what the commissioner knew or existing and the governor knew, whatever that is, decide.
Because, I mean, with the PARK, you, you have the option, there'll be a new exam coming on. The question's how and what manner it's gonna be. You get a one-year free pass, basically. You can test the technology. You can get an assessment, they may be nervous, but the next year they will have done the exam the first year, at least understand what the exam would be constructed of. And it keeps the level one. Um, so, you know, I would tend to think that the PARK is a reasonable option. I mean, I'll go with what the committee says, but I still think that we're looking at basically the common core. We've got a great school. I mean, the district is very good. We do perform well in all, most standardized tests that we can see. So I think that no matter what test is given, I think they'll do well. I think having experience one year ahead as a, basically as a, again, pre-pass, I think it's extraordinarily helpful, um, because I don't see that the MCAS will stay much longer. And we're still gonna be using that to judge the proper levels as they go on. So I, I would still lean towards the PARK, but I'm not really with the committee opinion.
Just a question, um, and forgive me because I don't remember. If you could just remind us how in the test sample that was done in the spring with our students, how they fared primarily on the.
We did not get any results. No, we're privy. We do have, we do with ourselves?
No, no, we're not entitled to say.
I need that. No, no. Uh, we have no results as to how they did. We do have their emotional well-being and the, the ease with which it was administered. I can speak to the ELA particularly. The students found it somewhat easier.
Right.
Uh, they found the technology something they didn't miss the stuff with. They didn't like the air cons, they took those out and took their buds.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the technology was not an issue. Uh, they just went with the flow. I just, I, I didn't hear any complaints. Uh, there were snafus everywhere around the state. We experienced many. We gave it, we wrapped it up, we sent it out and we said, okay, let's go on with life. So I, I don't recollect any really. So I I don't recollect any, really.
There were also some issues that I read about in the newspaper around the park and student confidentiality, sharing data. I can't remember where I read that.
I think there was a concern about some of the test questions being shared, because that the the length of testing for park is a number of days. It's not quite like.
But in shorter segments?
Yes, but it covers somewhat somewhere within the twenty way, twenty-day span of getting kids in and out on a certain, it's logistically difficult, but.
I have a question. Why is this the first time we're hearing about smarter balance? Because we've talked about.
Because we're not involved at all in the state in smarter balance.
But it it is impacting us, because now we're seeing that other states are going with smarter balance and we're not. I mean, in Massachusetts, it isn't. So you're using it as an argument for not going with the park. So I would have liked to know that, you know, other states were using smarter balance before I went to this meeting tonight, because I certainly would have been on on the computer doing a lot of investigation about the smarter balance. So I don't feel, I think it hampered my preparedness for this meeting tonight, and you know how I am. I would have done a freaking dissertation on smarter balance and had a more informed, you know, thought.
I agree. But I think regardless of what we know or don't know about smarter balance, we're left out of the fraternity.
I realize that, but it's a fraternity I didn't even know it existed, okay? So I'd like to know what's out there in the future.
So is it the Massachusetts Secretary of Education that also sits on the park board? Is that correct?
The chairman of the.
Yes, there's, so there's a little connection there.
Correct.
Which is why smarter balance probably wasn't brought to the table.
But I didn't even know smarter balance.
Can you say that, you mean, not Matt Malone?
No.
It's Mitchell Chester, who is the missionary of education.
Right, commissioner.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Sorry.
That's one of the biggest problems I had with this, the whole thing. It doesn't seem to be very independent. There's an agenda that's being pushed on, apparently, I mean, the commissioner's on the, on park, he's clearly for park, and not so certain why or what or where it goes. There is an interesting discussion of, the community just might wanna know, that is being held on September twenty-fifth. Unfortunately, it's after the fact here, we know about it. The the Pioneer Institute is giving a presentation with a political group in town. So it also appears to be a political decision to some extent. So, you know, it's, the rumor is, right, that if there's a new governor, and it's one party or the other, it's gonna go in one direction or the other. So I was struck by the politics and the lack of bipartisanship that it should have, given that it's a school mission, but not surprise. Struck. So.
How struck were you?
So for me, personally, I I was just gonna vote status quo. But it sounds like we've had enough discussion tonight, and maybe it's time for us to make our our vote and our decision, correct?
Yes, and there's, you know, when you're on a waitlist, there's no guarantees. Even if the committee said, let's have park, and we're in line but not chosen, we're still doing MCAS.
Right.
Correct. Especially if Austin goes to park, they may not be room for us.
I think there'll be a room.
A whole lot of seats.
I I wouldn't think there's not a seat at the table when they.
It's a long day.
But we'll never know. But so so shall we then have a motion to, we could do it affirmatively, to 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 either keep MCAS or to go to park? We should have a motion on one way or the other?
To make a motion that we keep the MCAS, I guess we'll start with that.
Okay. We have a second?
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Nay.
Was that any abstentions?
Nay.
Nay. So three aye, two nay, we keep MCAS?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go and I can change our position. We both support a test that deals with the common core. Because smarter balance and the park are both testing the common core in MCAs.
Okay, next topic is graduation day.
Yes. So last time we met, there was a lot of discussion, spirited discussion, about the graduation, to have it in town or not have it in town, and have it on that second Saturday or not have it on that second Saturday. And one of the things that we were asked to do was, I know Carolyn was asked to go home and think of a good survey, and I then went off to the music circus and started discussions with Vince Longo, which was really a continuation of discussions we had started in June. And so I haven't even had a chance to catch up with Mrs. Conley, because when she showed up at my door today at two o'clock for our one-hour meeting, I sent her away for an emergency. So but what I wanted to share with the committee is that after some lengthy discussions with Mr. Longo, who absolutely understood the plight of what we were asking, he came back on September eighth and indicated that they will give us the music circus on June sixth, two thousand fifteen, at no cost.
Wow.
And they would, they consider the graduation, he did go to the board of directors. They consider the graduation to be a community event that the music circus will always want to be a part of. And as he says, what goes around, comes around, cheers. So I came to say that we are offered the graduation back on June sixth. And but it would require a vote on the part of the committee.
Can we vote quickly?
And I haven't had a chance to tell.
Consider me voting.
I didn't think you'd object to the fact I hadn't gotten to you today.
We should bake him a cake.
Well, I've already done a very nice thank you note. Yeah, I've already done a very nice thank you note for he and the board of directors, because he, before he could make that decision, he had to go to the board of directors and contact them and have a discussion with them before he came back to us. So I've written a thank you note on behalf of the committee and myself for the district, as thank you for allowing us to return on it. That certainly satisfies, hopefully, what you were looking for, keep it in town, keep it at the music circus.
Absolutely. And even if we had had to pay for it, moving it out of town didn't make sense to me.
Well, and somewhere, I I wrote down the number of seats in there for you, so you can order all the tickets you need.
It's like twenty-five hundred or something.
Really graduating?
No, the number of opportunities to sit there.
Oh, right.
Well, that's just great news. And again, it's just another, just like, you know, the the folks that were here earlier tonight, it's another community institution helping out, and it's great news.
It is amazing.
So we would, very generously thank the music circus and all your efforts. Do you want to say something before?
No.
Okay, we have a.
I'm gonna make a motion.
What's that motion to do?
And he's gonna second it.
Can I just, I wanna thank him a lot. He really did a lot of work to get this done. You know, the South Shore Playhouse is really a facet of our community that has been around a long time. And these are the sorts of things that they do. They do a lot of donations locally to, you know, our auditorium. They put on a lot of shows. They, I'm one of their neighbors, and they're a great neighbor. It's great to see the tent go on. It's part of the tradition of Cohasset, so I just really wanna thank them.
It's great to sit on your front porch and listen.
It's just, they're a wonderful group.
They are great. Thank you so much for the community.
You know, this is, it's a community, you know, gem in the in the society in a way, because it's a wonderful, sort of, one.
Mrs. Conley's just excited she doesn't have to do the survey.
I already got it, you know, just in case.
So I like a motion. I'll make the motion that we accept the generous offer of the South Shore Playhouse to offer the music circus for graduation in sixty years.
Sure, thanks a lot.
Jesus, already, Paul?
So Holley's gonna second it? Okay. Now, I was, it's a roll call vote, because it's essentially a donation, or no, it's just a shift.
It's a shift.
Okay.
No, it's a shift.
Can we roll for just to be sure?
So you're changing the calendar.
It starts in cement. All right, we'll roll call it, just to be safe.
You don't need a roll call, no.
I'm I'm just accepting the advice of my good vice chairman.
I'm just thinking, I want it, and come on, I want it.
I wanna lock it down.
I would call that obsessive proposals.
Sometimes you need that.
All right, so let's vote, please.
Holley, leave. Aye.
Gina Stein, oh, aye.
Paul, you're aye.
Mary McGolden, aye.
Paul and you, Vanny, aye. So great, so we've settled graduation.
I was wondering, nervous that you were going to say, no, we don't want that. I'm thinking, how do I go back and tell them?
Are you kidding?
I could not.
So I guess if we could ask Mrs. Conley, maybe you can notify senior parents, although I think Christian's over here texting everybody he knows, that we will be having graduation on Saturday, June sixth, so we'll no longer interfere with anything.
And all of those dates leading up to it were left off the PSO calendar on purpose.
Yep.
And so now we can, you know, back up the timeline, so I'll distribute that information just as soon, and it's like, yeah.
And we don't have to worry about having a whole week of summer, something to do.
Two weeks.
Or two weeks, yeah.
And no conflicts with that last?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, good news.
All right.
Private school presentation.
Too far, too bad.
So under the private school presentation, when we met the last meeting, I know that the committee had asked if Mrs. Conley should come back and talk about private schools and where we're going. And you can bring some data back, which you handed to us, and that has been placed in the packet. And I was just checking, are you all cold or uncomfortable? Can you possibly turn the desk back there? I'm sitting here starting to chatter, so. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it was getting some chilly back here. I was a little concerned, so we have a ways to go.
Yeah, we really don't need air conditioning. It's kind of.
In any case, so maybe, Mrs. Conley, if you want to talk about the handout, I'm sorry to have interrupted.
Um, so one of the things that we started to track last year, and again this year, and with some specificity, was not only the students who were were accusing private school over a continued education in Cohasset, but the schools to which they're applying, and inviting parents in for the conversation about why the choice was being made, making sure people understood all of the potential for students to study here, and or inviting students to shadow a classmate for the day in the high school, particularly in the eighth into ninth grade year. So what you have in front of you is a spreadsheet with names redacted, for student privacy, of course, of all of the students in last year's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes, and the schools to which they applied, the decision that was made, and or a reason if the family chose to give us one. Plenty of families, those that are blank, a handful said, you know, really not, something, that there really isn't a reason, or I couldn't really tell you why, they just wanna go, or, you know, I really, we've just made a family decision. The name, the folks that are involved are the families who chose to come in and have a conversation with either a guidance counselor or an administrator. All families were invited in to do that, to discuss the possible decision, to talk about ways in which we could continue to support the students in our schools and or address any concerns they had around curriculum or extracurricular opportunities. So everyone was invited, the students and the families involved chose to accept that invitation. And of the ten students who accepted the opportunity to shadow a student from eighth going into ninth grade, ten initially said yes, about eight actually had the experience. And we matched them up with like students in terms of student interest and areas, subject areas, that students wanted to make sure that they would be challenged in, or that for which they had a particular passion. And so we feel that we've done a fairly comprehensive job of reaching out to students and families to make sure that, even if it is a legacy decision, that folks know we're terribly invested in wanting their children to be in our schools, but at the same time, very much respecting family decisions. And so I believe that Kate Nelligan and Brian Scott did a marvelous job of working with the middle school families around that decision-making process. And so we wanted to give you some really specific information, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Paul.
Yes. I have a couple of questions. Just interested in the, you know, the numbers for sixth and seventh grade are low, which is actually really nice to see, given the number of schools now that offer middle school programs. Out of what kind of a pool is that? So what's your your class size in grades six, seventh, and eighth, roughly?
Last year, one, we have one thirty-four and one forty-eight.
Okay. And then what was the eighth grade class size?
It was one seventeen, but it isn't now. I mean, obviously, our ninth grade is down from from these numbers. But we've also added other students.
Okay.
And and I think Dr. Schubert pointed out last time, what is the rough percentage every year of, you know, the students applying? And obviously, some schools appear more often than others on the list. And there were very few families who felt that they had anything particular, a particular concern about our school environment. It was more of a, an interest in exploring another environment. And to be honest, there were two kids on the list who were new to our school this year, and friends said, oh, I'm going to such and such, you ought to apply, so off they went.
Right.
And it was just kind of a caprice. So that's, that answers your question?
Yes.
Yeah, the question I had, one of five, how many actually got into those private schools?
Most of them got into at least one. There are, there were three students. Families don't have to share that information with us.
See, we don't know, you know, if they even had the choice.
We do know. We know what the students that stayed definitely could have left. They had the opportunity to leave, yes.
Okay.
Of the students who left, I don't know if they applied to three schools, if they were accepted to all three schools.
But they have got into at least one of those.
They got into at least one, because off they went. They had someplace to go. But all of the students who elected to remain did, in fact, get accepted to to the private school.
Well, we don't know, yes, the ones who remained, that's the only ones I was concerned about. Because obviously, the ones who got.
They did. They aren't here by default.
Correct, exactly. There was the ones that remained, they definitely got into at least one. It seems like, so you had about twenty-nine people from eighth grade who, um, who were talking about. But out of those one, two, three, or quite a few end up staying in Cohasset.
And obviously, you know, if the goal is to increase our retention rates in terms of people seeking private school opportunities, we're happy to continue to provide information to families. And I think that this was the first year that we had students shadow. And so as we've done with other programs in the past couple of years, all we can do is strengthen it and and maybe make sure that that opportunity is available to parents, that eighth-grade parents in particular know about that, you know, earlier in the year. We did it fairly early on, because we know the decision-making time is often, you know, early spring. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Of the ones that are there, are they like all like they're all day schools? Are there any that are boarding schools that are there?
Two schools? Holdenis is a boarding school. And that, and pretend that's, and Tabor.
And Tabor. Nobles is not?
Nobles is, there's an option.
Correct. Yes. So twenty-two students, you know, left for high schools that I could count. And then half of them went to Catholic schools. So, you know, that choice seems to be one that we can't, you know, that's.
And so maybe an interesting update, and now a year or two from now, you know, if I add column, we might, we might have three or four that returned.
Yeah.
So twenty-nine students applied to other schools for ninth grade. Am I reading the chart correctly? Because it also indicates yellow, but there's no yellow.
Well, I, so that's why I put parenthetically used during the process.
Okay.
So for my personal record-keeping, when kids are applying, I leave, you know, they've applied, they've been accepted, waiting to hear means that the student hasn't yet made a decision, so that I can kind of keep track of who are the families with whom we're still trying to connect.
Did you do any, did you look at any kind of data for what the number looked like last year? Because out of those twenty-nine, only seven are staying. So I'm just curious, and twenty kind of, kind of seems like around the number that usually leave. So I'm just curious if it, if it's in line with the year before.
I think in terms of percentages it is, because the class size was bigger, bigger in the eighth grade than the previous couple of years. This is, we have records last year that I can, you know, if you'd like me to circle back around another time, I certainly can. But this is, this is the first time I did it this specifically. So previously, there were student folders had an exit interview sheet in it. And it was more of a list of kids who were going to be unenrolled, rather than the whys and wherefores and and what were their considerations.
Sure. I'd like to see the data, though, going forward, absolutely. So like I said, I don't expect you to backtrack.
Yes, so we can continue to add, that's for sure.
This is really helpful. Thank you for putting this together.
Interesting.
No other questions?
Thanks.
Yeah, half of the twenty-two would.
So the next item we have, again, Mrs. Conley is the star here for the show, is to talk about the college process for seniors. I know that's something that was requested of the committee last week, and that's gonna, I'll let you take it away.
Okay. So first, I'd like to introduce Laura Suzuri and Kevin Magowan, our high school guidance counselors, who are courteous enough to join me this evening to field some of your questions.
Thank you.
When when Mrs. Cataldo asked me to prepare some information to share about the updates or changes to the college planning process, even though I know the agenda item listed as college planning for seniors, we all know it's a high school planning process. And so I've headed your handout, guidance goals for two thousand twelve, because that's when I arrived. And I couldn't really list it, even though it's been on my school improvement plan for the past two years, because I inherited another school improvement plan. And so what you have on the first page is a list of the things that we identified as a school community that needed to be improved in the delivery of the college planning for the high school students. And those with checkmarks are things that have been completed. And obviously, there were three things down the bottom that are ongoing initiatives that will continue to be improved and strengthened over time. So that was just kind of an overview of things that I and my staff had identified as things we wanted to tackle. On the second page, one of the, one of the things that I am proudest of in terms of being able to make immediate difference in Cohasset high school students' planning is allowing students to visit with college reps. So when I arrived, you can see in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. So when I arrived, you can see in 2011 and 2012, thirty-two school reps visited, but zero of them met with kids, because students weren't allowed to meet with them, there wasn't time built into the day, or there wasn't an opportunity. And it certainly isn't a condemnation of past practice of my predecessors, but it seems to me kind of illogical. And so we've tried to up the ante considerably. Not only in the opportunities for students to engage in face-to-face contact with the college reps, but also in our counselor's ability to, to build a network with those same representatives. And Nancy Creighton, the guidance secretary, has worked very hard, reaching out to broaden our scope, which was another thing that I thought was really critical to our students' college choices. So you can see that the growth in the number of colleges that visit, and, and of importance to me, the number of those schools that aren't in New England, because most of our kids are fairly industrious and can get themselves to Northeastern, or BU, or UMass Boston if they want to take a twirl around the campus, but are more reticent to contact schools below the Mason Dixon or beyond the Mississippi, and we want to make sure that folks, they can do that. So you can see the last year, three hundred and sixty different interactions happened between students and college reps. And so far this year, we're at seventy-three schools, the responses are still coming in, and a hundred and thirty-four students have registered so far to meet with those college reps. Now, we've also recognized students being students, and have had conversations with kids about the authenticity of these meetings. And we, I can assure you that nobody is attending the Yale meeting, that ought not be attending the Yale meeting, except for if the student has a legitimate question. And so what we've put in place now is a conversation the counselors are having with students to say, be judicious, just because you get an email and Naviance for the college visit doesn't mean that you're signing up for it, because you just happen to miss conspiracy theory every Thursday, or whatever is the case. We also have invited these reps to meet with students only during the utility block on Thursday, and they have been very receptive. The alternates I've proposed to the colleges are lunchtime and/or a two-fifteen meeting. So if the students are genuinely interested, those things could potentially work also. So far, nobody has balked at our scheduling, and I said to Nancy, you know, the schools opt to want our students badly enough that they're willing to meet us where we are. Obviously, we can make a consideration if folks aren't willing, but she hasn't received any feedback yet. In fact, I think folks see it as a convenient way to plop it into the schedule. So on Thursdays during the utility block, there will continue to be college meetings. And some, obviously, will fall out of that, but that's really our goal, so the students aren't missing class time. So that's one, that's one bit of information that's reflected in one of the goals that I had already checked off. The other thing I just kind of included, the Cohasset class profiles as a point of interest. The Naviance allows us to generate some pretty interesting data reports. And this was just one that's as far back as the information is reported. I include for you the percentage of acceptances for Cohasset students, and point out before somebody asks the question, wow, look at the dip-ins, 2012 to now, to last year's class, the average number of applications has increased quite a bit. So students used to apply to an average of, you know, five point seven schools, and now it's up to seven point six. So, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that the process is better, but it certainly means our students are broadening their search and opening their horizons a little bit. So I just included that for your kind of personal interest, I suppose. Questions about that, either those such as this?
Yeah, and the, the number that they applied, do you, do you think that they're applying to too many? As far as, or is it more, they're looking at all the ones that are in their reach, and looking to see which ones they get accepted and how they like the fit?
I think that there are some students who apply to too many schools, because they're unable to narrow it down, some from nerves, and others based on social influence of all of my friends who are applying there too. And so the, but those students are in the minority. You know, Laura and Kevin do a nice job of helping students have realistic conversations about places that are a match, but also encouraging kids to reach beyond. And, and when I have conversations with students about it, it's, you know, only apply to as many schools as you can handle hearing from. You know, because that, that's, that might be eight, nine, ten logins nowadays, you know, there's no more skinny envelope. So now they have to imagine what it takes to be able to present, or I don't, I can't imagine that decision instantaneous. So, but they know, and they prepare, they prepare themselves for that. And I think for the students who go overboard, applying to thirteen schools, it's more a matter of students' indecisive nature, and wanting to have many, many options, but I think your average student is applying to probably just the right model. Other questions or comments about other of those two areas? And then I just kind of provided for you a quick view of our planning timeline, nine through twelve. This is not the entire list, or, but it's the highlights. And a smaller kind of booklet version of this, and this is just a little Xerox of tonight, a small little booklet version of this that has some highlights and websites for students, and goes nine through twelve. Will be shared with parents at the grade twelve parent coffee, but will soon be available kind of on the counter in guidance. So people who don't have access to our students' published college planning guide can always grab a quick little reference point of what should I do. So I'm going to, you know, just kind of draw your attention, if you don't mind, to a couple of the newer initiatives of those items that are involved that have been changes in what we see as the necessary changes for college planning. You know, and rising ninth graders all meet individually with the assistant principal, Mr. Scott, to talk about building the high school schedule and what that looks like. Following the ninth grade year, each student, I mean during in nine, ten, and eleven, every student meets individually with Laura and Kevin to talk about, what classes am I taking, why ought I be taking them, where are my areas of interest? Given, hopefully by the time the conversation is happening sophomore year, what do you think you might like to do? Some students come to us in ninth grade with a very clear picture. Some seniors showed up last week and still haven't got a clue, and we deal with all of it. But I think that there is a need for starting the conversations earlier, and making them more personalized for student choices. We now introduce the Naviance College Planning Program at the end of the freshman year, rather than waiting to sophomore. In grade ten, again, I highlight the individual scheduling meetings. They now do the career inventory with the guidance counselors in January instead of June. So we sat together last year, along with then-department head Maureen Duffy, and talked about ways we could push, push it down, and push the timeline back, so that there wasn't such a frenetic pace to it, end of junior year, beginning of senior year. And that was based on a lot of community feedback, listening.
What career inventory do they use?
Uh, we use one in Naviance, compared with your programs, so it's for a while, everything's sort of saved, all of their information.
And I have two questions. One, have students been encouraged to start taking the ACTs? That's how come it didn't start the reporting of their results to 2009? So that's a new thing, relatively?
Yes.
Yeah, and I wish I, I, I wish I had the number offhand, it has increased so significantly. I've been here since 2008, I think that year maybe I had five kids.
Last year we had.
Well, it also could have been because of the length of the SAT, you know, exam. Some students, especially with attention issues, were encouraged to take ACT, which is a shorter test.
Sure.
I don't know if that was the reason.
No, and I think, well, I think also, you know, historically, over time, people associate the ACT with, you know, the Midwest, the center of the country, and now it became very clear to people that either test is appropriate for pretty much any school in the entire country.
Yeah, and there are some that are different.
Right, and I see many students score very differently on the one test versus another.
Yeah, it's short, it's, it's becoming significantly shorter, the ACT. And then the other question is, now you're recommending students doing the PSAT twice?
We do recommend that they take it sophomore and junior year.
It used to be just once here.
Yep, we recommend that they take it sophomore and junior year. We definitely see a significant difference oftentimes, not with everybody, between the results sophomore and junior year. So there's, you know, we see that parents are keen to acquire, you know, I don't want to take it again, I already took it, is you've learned a lot, you've matured a lot, you've taken a lot more tests, take it again, compare your results to sophomore year, that's going to show you a snapshot of exactly where you're at, where you're in that year, where you're prepared.
And how many years have, has the school system taken it twice?
I've been here since away, and I've always offered to both of them, to both sophomores and juniors since I've been here, I don't know.
Right, I don't, yeah, I don't think it much, a whole lot before that. And have you noticed an improvement, you said some students are improving? Because the national merit scholarships are basically.
The national merit, and to be honest, I don't.
And in the Midwest, it's very common to take it twice, in New England, it hasn't been very, you know, especially in schools that are not as competitive.
I don't know that we've had a significant increase in our national merit scholars based on that.
But students seem to be improving from sophomore to junior.
I think so, and I mean, I think just their general comfort level with the test, the vast possible environment, you know, they come to the school, they sit, it's perfectly sort of simulated.
And the final question I have, are students in the seventh and eighth grade participating in the John Hopkins where they're taking the SATs for the first time in seventh and eighth grade, are gifted students?
Are our students?
They're taking the SATs.
They used to. Uh, I never.
The John Hopkins programs.
Yeah.
Dean is with.
Some schools still do.
Uh, what do you mean, some schools? Do our, does that our school?
Uh, no, this school does not.
How come?
It was in the former school that did, we gave it to seventh graders, gifted and talented programs. I don't know why Cohasset doesn't, other than our children are so involved in other activities during the summer that going for gifted and talented programs during the summer, and traveling to those kinds of enrichment activities.
I would highly recommend looking into it again. Some students who have taken them in the past have gone on to amazing things. The John Hopkins programs has different levels of enrichment. Not everyone has to, you know, score as high as you would think. The ones who score a certain amount get to go to the summer institutes that are, you know, three to four weeks long. And, you know, they, because I believe Cohasset should meet the needs of every student, and we don't really have a lot going on for gifted students in the town of Cohasset. We used to have, back in the day, a lot more. And it has really been good for a lot of students in Cohasset. But the second tier are students who can be eligible for local programs, like, you know, in Boston, and things like that. And they come with scholarships and stuff.
They offer programs through MITs as well.
Correct, exactly.
The gifted and talented John Hopkins program.
Oh, they have to take the SATs in the seventh and eighth grade?
I'm not sure where it is right now, I mean, I'm, I've, I'm separated from that by nine years. So I used to administer them as well, and my children are involved in those grade seven SATs. Very stressful, very stressful for little kids, but.
Well, they're fourteen.
A number of them did take up some very enriching travels and activities, either locally, or Washington has most of them.
Yeah, the test doesn't have to be administered in Cohasset. The students can take it anywhere that they want. And, you know, it's not for every kid, but I think a lot of Coha, there are a number of kids in Cohasset, I think, who might benefit from it. And I recommend it, because, you know, especially if the interest is to get students, you know, to meet all students' needs and things. So it gives them a chance to have enrichment opportunities that we in Cohasset can't afford. So just a thought.
Echoing what you're saying, Eileen, I, I remember when I was in high school, I worked for the Princeton Review, which was like one of these test prep courses, and it's just proven that the more times you take it, naturally, the better you do, it's just practice like anything else. So I think it's great that we're doing it twice now. But I also think we should, we should really look at quite seriously taking it more, you know, whether it's seventh and eighth grade, or.
Yeah, it's not a mandatory thing.
And, um, do we have a, do we offer an SAT prep course at the, or is it just the private sector?
Private.
Private.
Okay.
But the recreation department does have one.
The recreation department has one, okay. Because obviously, as I understand it, it's interesting, because I'm quite far away from it, but the, I'm assuming SAT scores and maybe now ACT are still, you know, critical pieces to getting into school, right?
They are, yeah, I mean, that, you know, I mean, there's a growing number of test optional, optional schools, but certainly.
Small.
It's still a small number, and there's some schools on that list that our kids apply to every year. You know, some popular schools, but it's still a very big part of the process, whether or not.
Okay.
And just one more plug for the, the John Hopkins program. I know with my son in particular, he made, you know, he was very integrated into the school, but he ran out of classes taking math and science by sophomore year, pretty much. And by doing the John Hopkins thing, it made him feel that there was other people like him. If he went to Brookline High School, there would have been ten of people just like him. In Cohasset, according to his guidance counselor, they get one loss every four or five years. And it made him feel a little weird. And then he went to John Hopkins, and he saw there were more people like him. And he wasn't good in everything, he was, happened to be really gifted in math. And his verbal was strong enough to get into John Hopkins. And it, it was really good, it gave him confidence afterwards that he can do the work at MIT, he could do the work at Harvard, you know, he chose to go to Albert Pinober instead, because he wanted a small school. But I don't think if he didn't go to John Hopkins, he would have felt as confident in some of the intense classes where he went in college. So that's how I, he would say, he would speak about it right to this meeting tonight.
I think there needs to be some research in it, I don't know where that trend has gone in the last nine years. I don't hear of it as often, so I'm not sure it's as prevalent.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's veered away from some of the activities they've, they've offered. I know that there were some very rich activities following the catalog, in engineering and robotics at that point.
Right, they're still doing it, because I, I have clients who, who are doing it right now. So in, in South Shore, high schools are participating still.
A couple, I mentioned about the ACT tests. My son went to college who, we were east coast parents and did the SATs, and the guidance department was the one that offered my son saying, they said, try the ACTs, because it's a different format, different test, and see how you, see how it is. So that, that ACT push is really in the last, obviously, four, five years, and you see a lot more of the students taking ACT, it's a different option, different test, different style. So I think that's a, a thing that the east coast honestly never really saw for many years. It was really west of the Mississippi, and even almost west coast. And the other question I have, do they ever do any mock interviews with any of the students that are?
Yeah, that's on the list as well. So, so, no, no. So in junior year, you know, there's a focus on the event we partnered with the CEF last year to host an evening of articulating the college process that was well-attended by parents, not as well-attended by students, which will this year be mandatory for junior students. And the, the level we'll add to it this year was really successful. We had admissions reps come from Harvard and Northeastern and UMass Annex. And they were, they were really helpful in giving us different perspectives. And, and Brian Scott, you know, modulated the panel, and we had prepared questions ourselves, but also asked parents as part of the RSVP to submit questions, so that we could have all of those answered without having it feel like a talk show forum. And they found it really beneficial. And then the second layer that the parents were organized, that were responsible for organizing, that was wonderful, was then folks adjourned to the library, and current parents of, you know, last year were able to interact with senior parents from last year to say, who had just finished the process, because we have the night in February, who were saying, you know, it'll be fine, this is our experience. So they came from a whole broad cross-section of folks and different interest levels, folks who were interested in athletics, folks who, folks who wanted to play college athletics, you know. So it was, it was great. And so the thing we wanted to add to it this year is that when the parents go to the library to meet with other parents, the students will stay in the auditorium and have a student panel. So as I have conversations, and I have, you know, one-on-one meetings with students, current seniors, and they tell me a tidbit or a discovery they've made, I've been saying to them, consider yourselves, you know, on the rocket, because that's something our, you know, next year's crop needs to hear. Whether it's about visiting schools, whether it's about taking good notes, or following up with people. So that was a really, it was a nice revenge, it was an added benefit, and the CEF is going to follow on October seventh with a, a social kind of meet and greet at a local home to encourage this year's senior parents to again, come back and meet with parents of graduates, to talk about where we are now, to hopefully reduce folks' stress levels, and answer questions that, of course, they can find answers to by going online. But it's much more beneficial to be able to have a personal interaction with somebody. So we're working to, you know, again, strengthen those programs as we go along, but last year certainly was a tremendous improvement. And things we've added are the college essay workshop, which, which I have asked Jason McCabe to spearhead, and he did a great job last year, but the invitation is put out to all of the faculty to come and be a reader. Students are asked to come to the library on a particular afternoon, they receive an appointment, bring several copies of this college essay, to be wide open to critical feedback from a variety of sources, because as Jason and I discussed, the English teacher perspective is not the college admissions rep perspective. And so to be able to have everybody just give you kind of an honest sense of, you walk away with three or four different opinions that allow you to say, okay, and no one's required to revise, as suggested, but it's a nice opportunity for kids to, who aren't always really comfortable sharing their writing, to get some, some feedback on it beyond a family perspective, or beyond the teacher's quote-unquote grading of the college essay. And then Laura and Kevin run a mock interview session. And again, you know, this year they'll open that up to faculty members who want to participate, and, and hopefully for students, some students are more interested in a conversation with one of the three of us about what do you think it looks like, and oh my goodness, I'm really nervous, it's tomorrow, can I come by and practice with you? And, and some, so some of them are spur of the moment. But the more formal piece is about students choosing to come to an interview looking like they're going to. But the more formal piece is about students choosing to come to an interview looking like they're going to interviews and feeling the moment and, and us not really wanting to acknowledge that we have a personal relationship with these folks. And asking some difficult questions, because it's a very low stakes atmosphere that we then can reflect back on with the students. So I'll ask some really pointed questions of students. And then, you know, three minutes later, we, we're sitting there smiling and talking about the fact that that's what you have to be ready for, you know? You might get asked that. And then I think it's a really good, um, learning experience for kids, for all, for things, not just for college, for any interaction.
Um, the other thing is, uh, there's a number of people like myself who, um, are on boards for universities and we do alumni interviews right in, uh, our town of Cohasset.
Mm-hmm.
So it's very interesting. I'm on the board for Northwestern University, so. And I have had students who called me up and said, you know, how do I get into Cohasset? So you have, right in Cohasset, quite a, um, a rich source of alumni. And we've been plugging for our kids, but, you know, we're also, you know, what college wants.
Right, what are colleges want? What kind of, what, what the specific schools are looking for. So the grade twelve piece references the senior application checklist, which is a two-page, very detailed, you have, you must do this, 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 that all students get. But it seemed, you know, um, over the top to include it here. And also, uh, when the planning guide is printed and published and given to parents this year and to students, current juniors, all of the information that's embedded in that planning guide, this year seniors will also get. And, uh, but we're in the process, uh, we, we put it out to various people for some, um, some, for some revision. And Brian and I are in the middle of kind of putting the finishing touches on it, making sure it's a nice product for folks. But I think there's been some, um, some very positive steps in, in a good direction. And, and Laura and Kevin have been wonderful about bringing their own ideas to the table and, and feeling as though they, there, there've been some changes that they wanted to make for a while and were very eager to, to work with me on, on improving the process. And we have plans to just kind of continue that.
Um, do you guys identi- can I ask?
My, my, I have to do something.
Um, I, I have a seventh grader, so this is far in the future, or not too far, but I was wondering, do you guys identify schools that you want to reach out to that are maybe, but aren't aware of Cohasset, um, that are stellar schools, like, you know,
Yep.
like McAllister or Carlton in, in Minnesota that maybe students?
Well, I think part of that, part of, you know, us inviting the reps to meet with the kids and being really proactive, like in the past two years, we've really been proactive in reaching out to schools that maybe haven't visited here before. Um, and just by then, tho- those representatives coming here and sitting down with the student, that students automatically have a list and then they look at that representative's gonna be exposed and look at our profile, they'll meet with us and we talk about it. Uh, so that gives a, those are, those are opportunities that give us a chance to talk about Cohasset, about Cohasset in that way that I don't think existed before.
Right. And we sat down, um, two and a half years ago and, and generated the list among the four of us, the three of us and, and Brian Scott. We generated the list of schools that we thought we should be, with whom we ought to be interacting. And then we reached out to them to say, we would love to invite you in, we'll create the space and the opportunity for you to meet with kids, you know, give us a shot. And, or, you know, the other thing we're going to start doing is we know that there are schools who, who don't fit us into the rotation and that might be because they have such a large candidate pool that our small student body isn't, um, really as attractive to them in terms of their recruiting efforts. So we're going to be networking with some area schools. And when we know that somebody has a visit coming, if, if we thought that Hingham had a visit coming from someone, we would say, do you mind if we send a, a couple of our kids over? If it was a school that we thought somebody really, um, was hankering after, you know, and, and we didn't have the opportunity. So individually, we're able to kind of put people in touch with folks. And, and I've, you know, we've worked on establishing our own alumni database. The two thousand thirteen and fourteen kids have been great about helping me start to build the spreadsheet. Rob and Al has promised me that we're going to have an alumni database that will, once it exists, we'll be able to pull in the community, community piece that Dr. Lee references to, so that we know who in the town. And, you know, in the meantime, I'm using my high school alumni directory to reach out to people who don't know Carol McConley, but they know they graduated five years ahead or behind me, to see if we can, you know, network that way.
Um, given our small size, I'd like to jump back to the college visits and the college admission process. And I know that, um, you obviously belong to a group of principals that meet on a regular basis and I'm sure that the guidance department does also. And we had actually discussed in a previous meeting the possibility to maybe work collaboratively with other school districts, um, that are in the area. Um, I had asked previously if we ever had a college fair before you were here.
Okay.
And I was told, no, it wasn't, it wasn't worthwhile for us, because nobody wanted to come here because we were so small. But I was thinking if we had some kind of a collaboration with, say, Hingham and Norwell and Situit and Duxbury and Cohasset, maybe we could have a worthwhile college fair that would make sense for our students.
That would be great.
Yep. So one of the things that, and I've participated in, um, regional college fairs at others, at other schools in another districts, both as a teacher and administrator. And what I discovered is that, uh, most of the schools that will send a representative to that fair are the very schools who will come and have the small meetings with us.
Mm-hmm.
But we have certainly looked into, um, advertising to kids, you know, potentially, in fact, we were just discussing yesterday, the huge college fair in Boston in the spring.
Right. It is one at Regis also that I've been to.
And so, you know, many years ago, I used to say to students, you know, as a teacher, go home and tell your parents that you need to take Friday off. And that you need to be, you know, get together, doesn't it? You hop on the commuter rail and get into town and, and explore, you know, the opportunities. I've worked in other places where we do field trips to the college fair. And I don't think that our kids need that. But I think we just need to make sure that families are aware of the dates and when it's coming, because we do have, we do create a lot of opportunity. There isn't a great deal of personal interaction at those massive college fairs. But it can open the doors to, and the name of a school you've never heard of before, that who knows could be the perfect fit.
Exactly. Right.
And so for that reason, we'll make sure that students are, you know, I think it's April eighth and ninth this year. But we'll make sure that kids know, and if they need some, you know, encouragement to get a group of kids together to take the key in for the day. I think that it's a, we certainly want to put as many things as possible on the radar, but that would focus people a little bit.
Just a quick comment slash question. Um, I've been in the school system for some time and the improvements are fabulous, um, really great. Like anything, communicating these, especially to the parent population.
That was my next comment.
Is really crucial to this, because, um, I think the kids are involved and, you know, I'll talk to my senior and I'll be like, look, you know, have you done such a special one? Oh my gosh, yes, we do that at school. I'm like, okay, but here we all are.
Trust me.
So whether it's on, you know, something on Blackboard Net or your weekly newsletter or anything like that, because some parents don't even know, as much as it's their child's decision, they can come make an appointment and sit down and talk to one of you for ten minutes and say, is there anything I could be doing on my end or something like that? Just opening that up a little bit.
So one of the things that we're going to do at a parent coffee next Thursday, which by the way, for public record, will be replicated a following week, because it does fall during Rosh Hashanah, and I apologize for the scheduling of that, but we will have a duplicate event, um, two weeks after that and we'll make sure that we widely publicize that date. But the grade twelve parent coffee next week, we'll make sure that we have, oh, sorry. Grade twelve tomorrow. So we, we have, um, we'll make sure that we have some of these handouts for parents have, the information that the kids will have. But also, uh, just today, you said we need a two-page inset for our newsletter, so that the guidance, guidance is going to have a regular update in there. The version that I got today has all of the testing dates for the year, for the SAT and the ACT and things like that. So, so they're going to, they've committed to kind of writing a regular update on what's been going on, what were the conversations. So point well taken.
That's awesome.
Very good.
It's much more comprehen- like a one-stop shop kind of thing then. So hopefully it will address.
Right.
Um, and we did, it may be secondary, but Kevin last year set up a Twitter account, which actually we put a lot of really interesting articles.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
You know, we tweet out articles, um, and we'll do reminders, we realize that doesn't work for everyone. But, um, it is sort of a quick and easy way to access, not just Cohasset stuff, but interesting articles about, you know, whatever, social or college process or anything like that. So we're trying to get the word out about people checking it out as well.
Okay. And so you, I'm sorry, you said that the grade twelve coffee will do another date besides tomorrow morning or is that for the other one?
No, it's not tomorrow, my mistake. So it's.
That was the grade nine.
Yes, it's grade nine probably this next week, I apologize.
Grade nine, okay, thank you. Okay.
On things like the college visits, I have no idea, college reps came here. Um, is that on that sheet that you've given her?
It is, yes. Yep, we've highlighted it and we noted the process and, um, how students register.
And students register through Naviance, which is the college planning software. So students all get an email, there's a schedule in there, that's how they sign up.
But again, parents don't know.
Yep, and parents, parents have Naviance accounts too. Yep. So, so parents are, we'll get.
So we didn't know about it.
Um, so one of the things we did last year a couple of times in the newsletter, and Nancy Creighton sent out a letter saying that parents don't have a, an Naviance log-on account, that they can contact Nancy Creighton at any time. And we even printed up little, um, kind of business card shaped things to hand out for the junior parents last year. But we've been putting it out there a couple of different times, because we know that everyone has a thousand different log-ons. But yes, so you could, you could do a little, messy getting of your own. So we'll make sure you're able to do that.
Well, no, I did, and it didn't work. And I think you told me just use McAllister.
Oh.
But it's nothing that gives automatic, um, information.
So, it should work. I mean, you can call if you want, you call, no, I, I can just.
Okay, so I did call up, now that you say that, I did, and you said just use McAllister.
I might have said that.
But if he has a little herd, they don't look at it.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't, I can't, I can't recall what I said.
Okay.
We do have, we do have a lot of parents that do just, you know, house, it's the same exact information.
You know, but the announcements, parents won't know, cause it's going to the kids.
Right, you want your email address, yep.
Right.
So if I'm, yeah, right. So my screen looks different from, from a student, so I'll ask a question that maybe will help parents too. When a kid logs on, where is the announcement in the calendar page? Because I know where, I know how I look up the college visits, but where does the student see that?
So it's like at right at the top of the screen, it just says like, see, um, college rep visits, you know, click here to register. It's pretty, it's easy.
Yeah, once you familiarize yourself, it's fairly straightforward for the most part, yeah. And they just click on register.
Yeah. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
But I'll check it as well, cause I'm curious.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to concur with Mrs. McGoldrick. I think I've had, um, two kids in four years with Mrs. Truziary going to college and, and it's gotten, it was great with Johnny, who was going in one direction, um, and with Stephen was even, even better. And Naviance, it is a great tool. And everything I say to parents, seniors now is like, you have to take charge of the process with your kid, because it's their future, it's your money, and you have to take charge. You can't sit back and be a bystander and use the school's resources as, as resources. The other thing I'd like to comment on is, in both college processes with my kids, every school wants to know what you want to study. At eighteen, what do you want to do, what do you want to be? And I think they're looking at slots and majors, so they know if they want to accept you or not. And a couple of years ago, when I was on school council, we brought up the idea of a career fair. We used to have it here a long time ago in the seventies. And I think kids don't know what's out there, what kind of careers. And there's so many, just within our community, very professionals of all types that would talk to kids and say, this is how I got to where I am, or I fell into it, or I knew from, you know, whatever age, that this is what I wanted to be. And I think if that is, it's, it's not that it's a forever decision, but it can help shape kids' college choice, where he's gonna focus, what kind of school he wants to go to. And then, and then when they pick their majors, because you have to pick your major. You can go undecided, but they really honestly, they really don't like you when you're undecided. They want you to, they want to know how many are in the business school and how many are in the engineering school and how many are in the liberal, liberal arts college. And I think it'd be really helpful for kids to know what careers are out there.
I think that's an excellent idea, cause I've done it for the town as a psychologist. And I've gotten a lot of questions and some students have made college decisions based upon some of my recommendations about, you know, psychology in the field and things like that. I think it's really crucial, especially if you go to private school and you're going to be spending two to two hundred and fifty thousand for four years in a private school. I mean, not that you have to know for sure, but there are some people who end up in a situation as an undergrad and they're not getting the preparation to get into a psych program or a, or a med school or things like that. And it can just make their life easier. And some kids do know by the time they're a senior in high school, what direction they want to go, especially in medicine and things like that. So I think it can be really, really important.
Well, nothing else to be, in my children's school years, there was seventh and eighth grade had citizens in this town who involved different professions. And they'd come in assemblies, some of them were Dr. Siri and all kinds of people, and give them ideas for different kinds of things, uh, broad, broad range. And that seventh and eighth grade, they really picked heat in the turning. And I, I, I know why my children decided what to do with the presentation.
Well, it's funny that when you were saying that and now your comment, I was just thinking, we had a, we had a retreat, um, that, that we talked about initiatives and things. And I wonder if, um, if, we have a spill there. If, if we could explore the idea of having a, um...
Just a corner.
A career fair, where maybe, kind of like a college fair, where, uh, it gives, if there's enough interest, we could do it where, you know, parents, students, or just people in the community in general could come in and, you know, present to students about career opportunities. You know, and, because I know my career, real estate development. Nobody really knows what it, you even do, you know, until you start to tell them very detailed, Georgia's saying.
Yes.
And, yes, and, you know, people would love to hear from, you know, the various careers. Is that something that, as a, as a school committee, would we want to kind of make that recommendation to, to, to have, have something like that?
I think you make the recommendations through the guidance counselors. When you used to have a peer counseling, a more formalized peer counseling, I used to come and do presentation. Cause I was a direct, uh, worked in a college counseling center and I was the director of peer counseling. So I used to come and do that. And I've also been invited to speak in the psych classes and things like that, so.
Probably formalize something like that, if, an initiative like that.
I, I.
Everyone's looking at me.
Something that would go through.
It's not on the surface.
I, I think what we would do is, I would say let the committee, um, allow Mrs. Conley and Mrs. Demus and myself and Mr. Scott and the guidance department to sit down and talk about it.
See if it's something you think would be worthwhile, you know?
It's already happening. I mean, like, uh...
It's it? I've never heard of anything like this.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Jack, uh, was, yes, Mr. Buckley has tried to get me to come in.
Mr. Buckley has.
Informal, but I'm saying, I'm talking like a formal sort of thing, that like a townwide kind of event, like a career fair.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's a good idea. Just plenty of control talk. You want to get people who really like their profession.
Just about a couple of quick things. One, with the, the financial aid and somebody who's been through it, um, college, you have to get your, for the parents, you gotta get your taxes done early. I mean, I hate to say it, but your financial aid offerings are going to be far better with a completed tax form sent in. So when it says, parents complete the FAFSA, you gotta do it.
Right, so the list for actual counts is more detailed.
Unless, unless you're gonna pay cash, unless you're playing, you know, you're going, you know, writing the check. You, you're gonna get a better offer that's clearer and more understandable and more accurate when you get your taxes in early. That's one thing. Um, and the other thing, looking at the, the, the profile, we, I was asking how many, um, schools they applied to. If you look at the last three years, the, the percentages accepted kind of drops down to what it was before. And what it may be, that they may be reaching for more selective schools, um, which may be good, because you've got, instead of five point seven, they're up to eight and a half or eight schools. So they may be going that extra school.
I think that they are. And I, I actually noticed that particularly last year. I would say last year's class, just, just specifically with the kids that I worked with, they were, they were really going for it, um, which was great. And I've seen a little bit of that theme as well this year, so I do, I think it's part of it. And I think some kids who are applying to schools in this, you know, highly competitive range, also sometimes are creating bigger lists, because it's much more unpredictable in terms of where they're going to be accepted. So I think for some students, that's a driver of it. Um, there's also an issue where kids get a lot of free applications. Um, that's a huge thing. And that has definitely driven up the number of applications, because sometimes kids do apply just to apply, um, and that's a decision that they make as well. And I see that all the time. Well, I got a free application from there, so I just sent it in. And I have no intention of actually visiting or going there, but there's these little factors, I agree, that are definitely causing numbers.
And sometimes that helps just going through the process when they've got a couple under their belt, all the applications are done and they're saying, oh, this is how you do the next one. And so it's quicker to go through the other school, they're gonna be more involved and more developed in their application process. Um, and the other thing with deciding a major, you know, sometimes undecided, depends on the, on the career path you're going into. If you're not decided, sometimes the college is better to have an undecided major and then decide, you know. You hate to, you know, earmark somebody into it.
Right.
Um, something that they're necessarily not all that interested in. So sometimes undecided is, you know, it's helpful, depends on the college.
And it's very school-specific, um, to your point, whether or not, how much that matters. So if you're a youngster, you can't apply undecided.
Right.
Um, you know, at B C, it's very difficult to change your major. So different schools have different, you know, little pieces to that, what's, it, it, it depends, yeah.
Where at Middlebury, so many kids are undecided, just more like.
It's how it's expected and okay, you know?
Yeah. Here in Vermont, everything is different.
And so, you know, and sometimes that's helpful when you're deciding where to go, is, do you want to go to the, you know, engineering school? Or do you want to go to the one that's gonna be, yeah, kind of the general education process and decide where you want to? Do you want to go to the one that's going to be, yeah, kind of the general education process and decide where you want to go from there?
The other comment I had, uh, do we have grade inflation here, or how did we go up from two point five eight, I think that's a typo, to five eight eighty? This probably.
Wasn't typed, it was generated out of Naviance?
Yes.
I, I think it probably has something to do with the, with the emergence of a little something called weighted GPA.
Yes, right.
I'm not su- I'm not sure, or, or you're just growing them smarter.
Well, we always. Uh, no, my son was part of the class two thousand and six, we had a weighted GPA then too.
Oh.
So, you know, um, it could be that you have more kids taking A Ps, and AP is.
Mm, have a heavier weight.
Oh, totally, you know, if you got an APB.
It could also be the introduction of the Naviance program, this was right before I came, but, um, I think it's, there could be some inaccurate data inputting at that time, when it was first, when it was like first come about, it was like, what is this thing, you know what I mean?
Oh, first on the C.
It was, I don't think it was used as thoroughly, but I know from when I came in two thousand and eight.
So it's not statistically reliable or whatever.
It may not be, yeah, it may not, I'm just guessing.
It'd just be interesting that you go from, uh, a two point five eighty, I think that's what that first one is, to a three point four one one in, you know, eight years, that's interesting, that's all.
It's, it might, it might be the way that it's calculated, obviously.
Either that or we're like Harvard, we have grade inflation in Columbus, one of these.
Well, it.
All right, so.
Oh, no, no.
Mr. Rodney wants to.
It's probably time.
One of the things I just wanted to share with everybody that, um, I'm sure we get you caught up, is the profile that was just dropped in my box today.
Oh, yes. Mm-hmm.
This is what the Cohasset High School profile looks like, um, they were printed up, it obviously gives all of our information inside, all of our scores,
All written down.
Other types of valuable information, and on the back, like two thousand fourteen class, college acceptances.
I think great if you could scan and circulate that, yeah?
Yeah, that's great. Is that available electronically at all, or?
Maybe you could just show us.
They proposed it on the website, we posted on the website.
Yeah, just pass it around to the school.
Yeah, we have it in PDF file, yeah.
Okay.
And that goes with all student applications, that's the requirement, but that's what all schools say to describe, all just receive, um.
Right.
Can you send us that PDF?
Yeah.
And my recommendation is, once in a while, like that, I think, well, kind of, let's say she's about thirty-two years old, so, you know, this was a number of years, about fifteen years ago, they had a class that was incredible. And what they did was, they had, it was such a competitive class, so what they did was, they had a little footnote for what went on. So, um, admissions people in different places, we know this was an unusually strong class, but I, you know, that, that may not be an issue again. I mean, that class had four or five kids who had gone into Harvard, about two or three in MIT, I mean, it was crazy. That it was just a, of, of, in a glass, something in the drinking water or something.
That's great.
You may not have that issue then.
That's gonna be interesting. Okay, good, so, um, thanks for all the information, that's, there's a lot, it's obviously very important, and, uh, there's a lot of interest on our side, I'd love to see, um, you know, at, at the very least, I think, yeah,
What Alan's suggesting.
Some kind of discussion about admission.
What?
She's going to cheer.
Did you even want to cheer? All right.
Project, I'm all done.
I think it would be a great idea.
She knows everybody.
Let's put it on the agenda for next, um, next time, and we'll have.
Nobody says no to Alan.
To discuss it.
I think it's a great idea, and I'll talk about it.
I think, I think what we're, what we're talking about is some, discussing the viability of a, uh, community-based career fair. Where essentially residents come and talk to students of the appropriate age, whether it's seventh and eighth grade, or whatever you think is right,
Tongue down.
freshman year sophomore, or whatever's right, um, and, uh, you know, expose people to careers and company experiences, and things that they might not have heard about, uh, unless they get that exposure.
And I would include alumni, who don't even ask.
I would, that's right.
You may have a former researcher coming up, that ranks.
One comment I would like to make about that is, it might be something that we could go to the P S O and C E F, to see if they might be interested in co-sponsoring something like that, kind of like the C E F did with the event last year. That might be a nice avenue to launch it with.
It's a lot of sense.
Um, I'm happy to make two phone calls.
Thank you.
And I'll come back at the next meeting, but. So can I ask Mrs. Conley not to put her on the spot, they're asking if you can return on October first, and we'll all have a chance to try.
I believe I was already booked here for that evening anyway, because the M C A S.
Reed Day.
I, I, the way I figure it, I think I'm booked for Thanksgiving, so I'm happy to.
Well, that's good, we like company.
Yeah, principles, Lord have mercy.
And then, you know, it would be great to get your feedback, if you think it's a good idea, about it, you're not on the spot here, but after you've had a chance to discuss it internally, see how you might want to structure it, if you do like the idea, but, uh, I can imagine it could be very helpful.
I like the idea, it would be a matter of, you know, thinking about audience logistics, what does it look like?
Yeah, okay, all right, so, um, I guess the next topic is superintendent goals. Thank you for staying so late, I really appreciate it, thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
Next topic is, uh, Boston Magazine.
Oh, that's right, it's inserted, sorry, Boston Magazine, which.
Just to be aware.
The rankings of the show.
We reposted very late today again, and just popped in Boston Magazine for folks on the board, but we wanted to just do a little touch base with you in terms of, make lots of pleasurable reading. All of the information here came off of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website. There's nothing here that we created that's new, but it is all downloaded for you, so that you can see what we see, and the information that's contained herein is also part of what Boston Magazine uses. But, um, Mrs., I know Mrs. Davis is going to help me along with this part of it. I know that on Sunday, you all received from Mrs. McDol- McGoldrick, the article that said, Boston Magazine retracts school rankings. Of course, we know the rankings were not significantly high this year, in fact, they were somewhat lower than in the past. And when you read closer, you'll realize this article is only pertaining to private schools, it is not pertaining to public schools. So when the magazine first came out on August thirty-first, I may, I reached out to Mr. Rec over at Babson College, and I wrote him, and I called him, and then I called him again, wrote him a second time, didn't haunt him. But I did write him, and we have yet to hear from Babson College. And then, of course.
And Babson College is the statistical, and the teacher is the professor of statistics.
He's a gentleman who did the statistics. And then when this article came out, I, I was so taken aback that I immediately went and looked at Mr. Robinson's email, and sent him an email, and talked to him about the article, and said, oh, it would have been great if we had been able to look at the public schools, because one of the initial things that was picked up on the public school secen- sector is the fact that the population listed for, uh, Cohasset was for grade six through twelve, and then they made their judgments based on six through twelve. Well, there were, if you go to the website itself, you will see there's a series of comments that are made, and of, I don't know who they are, folks from Cohasset, no doubt, who wrote about the fact that Boston Magazine's missed the boat, that we don't have that many students, and then gave the specific number that we have. So Boston Magazine changed the number on September tenth, changed our number of students, and did grades nine through twelve. But they didn't bother to recalculate the formula, they just left everything else sitting there. And that made us kind of curious, and so then I went on Google and started to do some hunting, where I found out that Delmont was in a very similar situation a number of years ago, where they had received some national awards, uh, for their performances, were in the top ten in some of the, uh, national magazines, and yet they were ranked so low in Boston Magazine, they were stunned. And of course, we all know that U S News and World Report rated us quite high this year, and then this didn't seem to compare. So we were sure, we were so sure, Mrs. Davis and I, we've been hunting for, you know, days now, we were so sure there must be an answer to things. Well, one of the things that Mr. Robinson told me, and he was terrific, I had a very lengthy dialogue with him yesterday, he said, couldn't get the formula out of Boston Magazine to save his life. I said, well, I'm sure I can do something, so I immediately called the editor in charge today, and I'm still waiting to hear from the editor in charge. I did hear from another editor, though, and he said, he had to turn everything over to the editor in charge, and I'll follow it up, and I obviously sent an email. But we did go back, and we took out the results, and I know that we said that everything seems to keep changing. So the idea is, if you want to see comparatively how you're doing, you really have to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges, every year in and out. And what we discovered is, that every year, the rankings have changed, because the formula has changed, because the criteria has changed. And so, in one year, in particular year, we found that the magazine just gave everybody's information and listed it alphabetically, but didn't rank anybody a number one through fifty. That seems like the nicest way to go, you, you decide for yourself. But then we went back and we took a look in two thousand eleven, and in two thousand eleven, the score was based on fifth grade M C A S, uh, eighth grade M C A S, tenth grade M C A S, average S A T scores, student teacher ratio, enrollment per pupil spending, graduation rate, number of sports teams, half or full pre-K, and number of A P classes, nothing to do with scores. And then we went, we took a look at two thousand and twelve, because surely you're going to compare the same thing the next year, and what we found was that Boston Magazine used the enrollment, the student teacher ratio, the district per pupil expenditures, the graduation rate, the percentage to college, the tenth grade M C A S, the S A T scores, the percentage of A P proficiency, the number of A P classes, the number of varsity sports, and the number of clubs. But they didn't bother to go back and look at M C A S from the lower grades, they didn't bother to go back and look at the clubs, or anything that had been included in the previous year, so how you could compare the two, it made a difference, I hope. We went to two thousand and thirteen, and in that year, they used M C A S for grades three, five, eight, ten. Student teacher ratio, S A T scoring on the A P exams, three to five only, per pupil expenditures, percent going to college, uh, graduation, graduation rate, the average class size, but not ratio, and enrollment. And then we came on this year, and of course, we know that overall, this year, they made an error in our number of students and calculated incorrectly. They also.
Can you explain that one for everybody? I know what you're talking about, but I don't think.
Oh, well, the fact is that everything they did on the formula was based on seven, seven hundred, uh, plus students that were included in that first number. So that was calculated against our ratio, against our expenditure, against the percentage going to college, all the way across, they'll take that ratio. And the distribution of how much weight they gave to S A Ts versus how much weight they gave to M C A S versus how much weight they gave to per pupil expenditures, they won't reveal.
So, in other words, dividing by a lot more students than.
Yes.
Is, is, but taking the expenditures from just the nine through twelve?
No, they took the expenditures six through twelve.
Okay.
And, and that's all the information they got was right off of the DESI website, so they weren't making things up, but they weren't calculating it correctly, based on the fact that they had the wrong pool of students, and they didn't go back to recalculate. So for that reason, we know the numbers are off. We also noticed that, over the course of the years, when they included all of our M C A S scores, grades three, grade five, grade eight, and so forth, that our numbers were higher. And when they only do tenth grade, our numbers are lower, so clearly there's something to do with the weighting in M C A S, more than anything. But the biggest issue is that, and what I took issue with, and I spoke to Mr. Robinson about it, I said, I wish we could look at the whole child. Why can't we look at the whole child? Why is it only based on rankings of grades, unfortunately, but that's what it is, the scores? Because those are the most measurable and tangible. But the reality is that they can't, we can't even be compared year to year against ourselves, because the criteria that they're using each year is changing.
Correct.
So as a result, well, it's interesting to see where everybody is, we have to kind of give it a grain of salt. We're not trying to demote anything about this, we're not trying to say it's not important for folks. But what we did want to point out is that we went back and we looked, we couldn't find any year that we could compare to.
Correct, garbage in, garbage out, that's what statistics are, you know.
I knew you'd appreciate it, analyze that.
I mean, if you put in stuff that i- is not comparable, it, it's, it, it doesn't become nearly as meaningful.
There's a great, great quote in the Boston Globe article on Sunday, it says, not, not only are they not comparing apples to apples, they're comparing apples to our darts, which is so skewed this year, so, it'll be interesting to see if they do this little ranking this year.
Correct, yeah. Yep.
Well, yeah, that was my thought, that's the first I brought. It might be on the ranking business, I don't know. So, and Mr. Robinson was so nice, he said, I'll come to your meeting if it helps, I'll do it, you know, he was a very, very nice gentleman, and, um,
Yeah, they're getting a lot of crap, yeah.
I think he's kind of interested as to what we were finding out. But what it frustrated me the most is that you can't really do a year-over-year comparison.
Correct.
And they will not release their formula, and clearly, because it was flawed for the private schools, I think with so many public schools at stake, they're not about to open that front door.
It does speak to, though, maybe, our own need to do an internal scorecard, where we have the same methodology year after year, and track ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it won't be relative to the Boston Magazine or to other schools, but at least we can track our own performance.
We do, just so you know, we do look at our M C A S scores year over year, and then we have data teams throughout the district, that's Mrs. Davis's department, if you have any particular questions, but we do take a look at our data from year to year, and we also, not just look at the, the number, the bottom line, we take a look at when we put in programs into our various schools, when we put in a new basal reader, when we put in the new math program, what happened that spring after we put those programs in, is there a dip, is it leveled, does it go up, what does that mean for us? And right now, we know that writing is an area that we really have to shore up. So we are watching our scores, just like we're watching attendance, we are watching our scores from year to year and see what the trends are.
We try growth through gibbles for years, and we, when we change the variable, we check that also, we're very careful about trends. The M C A S scores have a student growth profile that we follow over as many years as we can. And you'll see it when we talk about M C A S, we actually look at the control group, the cohort that started in kindergarten, and are following through. Uh, what are those kids doing over years in math, uh, in science, and, and in E L A? So we keep very careful. Right now, our data teams are looking at data and saying, who are our high needs kids? And when we pull them out, what are these other kids having a difficult time with? And how do they correlate with what our kids who are struggling are having a difficult time with? And when we come up with the same answer, and now we start looking at curriculum. And what we started doing is starting to look at, we are in a three and four year, uh, literacy program, we've talked to the publishers and to the trainers and consultants, and said, can you come in as, as someone who's objective and has known the program really well, to tell us, how effective are we delivering it, and should we be getting the results we are? So we are constantly talking about data and trends, and where are we, and are we, are we really addressing all of our students? And that's been our focus. Right now, it's looking at not, we did really well on M C A S, but did our, all our groups did do the kind of growth we wanted them to, and if they did not, why not? And if they did, why did they? What are they getting that other groups are not getting, or that we're doing differently, or is the, is the group changing? So, um, we're always talking about data, always.
Just a quick question, are you going to communicate this information to parents? Because unfortunately, I think perception is reality, and even though it's inaccurate, it's a daily ones to schools. And I'm so glad that you, you know, clarified this, but, um, I don't know how you would go about getting this information out there, but I think it's necessary.
Well, it's funny you should say that, because we were speaking last week at the retreat when it was brought up, and honestly, because nobody came forward and said anything to us till I heard it, I was amazed to see that there, there wasn't so much conversation about it.
There is chatter.
I didn't even want to call it chatter, but conversation, and so I wanted to present here first. And truthfully, when we started last week, we were trying to figure out where it was that we were dipping. It's not to say that we can't do better, believe me, we always, there's always room for improvement, always. We should never sit back on our laurels and say, well, just because we got a hundred percent on an M C A S English in one year, that it will be like that forever. We still have to continue to challenge kids and challenge ourselves. But, uh, we really, it was eye-opening today, this afternoon, we were like just putting stuff out of the printer, when I finally said, I'm going to look at all the years together, one after the other, we just couldn't find what the common factor was that was causing the dip, until I said, we're not even comparing apples to apples, because how can you decide that somebody has more clubs than another town, and that makes them better? We found in one case that in the A P scores, that our A P scores are, I think it was a ninety-four point five. And I have to say, that is so commendable, because we have an open door policy on A P exams. We allow anybody to take the courses and to take the exams, whereas other districts, you need to be selected to take the course based on grades, based on past performance, and then some places also limit whether, even if you're in the A P course, depending on what your grade is at the time, whether you can take the test.
We wanted to really understand that as well. We looked at both sides, where is our growth, and where are our A P scores? What I did is I pulled five, is it five we pulled of the top other schools and surrounding schools, and said, let me look at those A P scores, because this doesn't make any sense. When we took the common scores that we have in, uh, composition, in U S history, and, and all of those, and we looked at like to like, we could be number one in individual, but some schools offer fifteen A P courses their senior year, because they have three hundred kids, I mean, three thousand years, yeah. So that the population is great enough, so that they can offer more, but our students are achieving, and everyone who wants to take an A P course is welcome through the door. And we looked at some of the policies that said, you know, you must have teacher recommendation, you must take the grade. you must take the grades, and if you decide to take this, you may opt not to take the AP exam." We don't give them that option. You've taken this course, you have the responsibilities, we take the course, we will gladly embrace you if it's not the kind of score that's a three, or a four, or a five. We look at, you've jumped for the sky, and at least you jumped. You know, you challenged yourself, and we looked at that. We, I just said to someone today that when we looked at our scores in one particular subject area, we skyrocketed over everyone. And so, that's not there. But I'm sure that, you know, the top school listed in Boston Magazine is number seven in US World Report. So how did they drop in one day?
Right.
So if we're looking at numbers, we need to look at the data. How did we go up to number thirteen? I mean, how did, how did we, you know?
The other thing we noticed is that, and we're kind of pleased, is the fact that the district was considered level one in the eyes of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and some of those other top districts that you probably saw in the rankings aren't actually level one at this time. So they have some shore up that they need to do, and next year, those numbers might change, until Boston Magazine does year over year over year, and does the identical items. You're never going to get a clean comparison. And it will be really hard. And I'll be glad to put that up. I'm out of town as of five AM tomorrow morning, I'll be back on Friday night, and then I can work on opening meetings with some of the others, so that's sort of-
That'll be great. That's important to communicate the-
Right, and I apologize that I didn't realize it was causing so much angst among the, the school community, because we are somewhat insulated in the office, we don't hear it, nobody's written us, nobody's called us, and I don't want anybody to think that in any way that the schools are not doing the job to, to educate their children. It's really important they understand that we can't change, what did you call those stats? Garbage?
Garbage.
Garbage. It's, it's really a matter, and it's not necessarily these are bad stats, it's just that they're not comparative. You cannot compare them year over year, because they're not identical.
And I would focus just on the fact that they've retracted the rankings.
Well, the pub, the private only, the private-
But it speaks to the fact that there's a-
There's a flaw, it is very flawed right now.
It's also amazing that they looked at how much we were help-spending for SAT prep.
I know. What difference does it make?
We're trying to sell magazines, guys.
Yes, that we know.
You know how many statisticians probably called? I mean, I was going to call, I was a math major, and I was taught math and stats. And I just, you know, just laugh at that stuff. But it's good that our superintendent recognizes it, because not everybody's trained to look at it across the magazine and see how it is.
So we'll get something out. It'll just probably not be before next Monday or Tuesday.
But that's how they sell magazines.
The important thing, too, I think, is that this kind of dovetails maybe now's the time, and that should, with our, again, with our retreat that we had last week, we talked about some potential new initiatives. And I think we said that we might want to set up a subcommittee to explore, really just the whole notion of who is our peer group? Who do we measure ourselves against? In some circumstances, we might want to measure ourselves against schools of our same size. In others, we might want to measure ourselves against schools that are located geographically near us. In others, it might be schools that we think were competing for new kindergarten families from, you know, people moving from Boston, or from this various, you know, cities out to the suburbs, if you will. So we thought it would be a good idea to start looking at that, you know, who are our peers, why, when, under what circumstances? And this speaks right to it, you know, who are we comparing ourselves in the rankings, and why? So I guess now might be the right time. Do we, do we want to establish a subcommittee, like we talked about still? And, and if so, who might want to be on it, among our, among our team?
Um, I think it's interesting, but it's ten PM at night, could we table it?
Well, if we table it, it goes away.
It'll take thirty seconds, you don't want to be on it.
No, I'm interested, I'm interested, but I just don't want to.
Now, do two or three people want to be on it? I don't know, anybody else would be, I'd be on it, with you if you want, and-
So what is the subcommittee again?
To examine the, the peer group, and-
District.
Yeah, who are we, who are we wanting to compare ourselves against, to benchmark ourselves against, under what circumstances? Why?
Well, I don't think it should be members of the school board, I think-
Initially, though, subcommittee to start establishing what we should do, then we could bring in public, you know, everybody that we want, we need to spearhead. So do you want to think about being on it, or not being on it?
I just want to think about the whole idea.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is we, do we want to establish a subcommittee? Because what we said, we didn't want to make this go on too far down the road, because we wanted to act on it quickly, so we could have this be relevant this year.
I will be on the subcommittee with you.
Would you want to be on it?
Yes, I'd love to.
So do you, you don't want to be, or do you want?
Oh, I'll join it.
All right, come on over. All right.
I'll bring just now, it's now a four.
So that's a three, that's a good, that's a four.
No, it's now a four of a few.
Two with an, two with an alter?
Oh, you can only have two. So why, why don't, no, no, why don't you two be on it? Because next year, I'm done with the school board, so you should have somebody to continue.
Okay.
Because I'm being overly right, this is my sixth year, can't you see my air spread right?
All right, so, so we'll establish the, the subcommittee to examine our-
Yeah, the two of us.
-peer group, Mary and I.
Yep.
And we'll consult with you as needed, of course, on statistics, and the rest of the team.
I assure you, I'll give you my opinion.
Yes, all right.
And Mrs. Venus will tell you what our-
We're established, so we, that's good.
Our co, our cohort.
Our cohort.
The next item, and hopefully final, this lengthy discussion, will be super done goals.
Yes, so I sent you all a set of goals via email on Friday, and then I gave you hard copies, days instead of going, "Goodnight, Mrs. Conley, thank you."
Goodnight.
See you tomorrow morning. And, and so basically, what it did is trying to follow the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in terms of setting smart goals, as they have taught us, and setting, I tried to set a student learning goal, and then a professional practice goal. And then, what I had talked about, I know I spoke to you, Paul, about this, this year, and how I worked my practice, and what I'm doing, is that every single week, on Monday usually, we as a central office meet, and we have our set of goals, and the central office saw these goals, as well as the committee. But we have a meeting that runs about an hour, an hour and a half, every Monday, as a catch-up, which sets the tone, we go through what everybody is doing, and it allows me to oversee what has to happen in the district. Then, every other week, I have a meeting with the leadership team, which consists of all the principals and the central office, and then we bring any other parties in that we need to, as part of the discussions, of which we oversee what's happening in the schools. And we work together collaboratively to look at curriculum, look at the finances, look at special education, look at whatever has to happen in facilities, whatever the need is, if we're entering budget, that will become a critical thing. And then, I go and work with the principals every other week, we sit and we meet for an hour, and talk about their goals, talk about what's happening in the building, and talk about how I can assist in the buildings, assist with them, talk about the evaluation tool, how we can oversee the learning. And so, based on the fact, it's a, you know, it starts at the top, but it grows, and it's not just my goals, it's really how we're all working together this current year, to bring the practice around and make it a cleaner process.
Um, these two goals, you know, I get it, you specified it, they're strong goals, but I would add at least one more that we talked about previously, and that is the, the emotional and physical health of the students here. I appreciate you being involved in the Safe Harbor initiative, but we already lost two alumni in Cohasset to overdose, and I was exploring the situat, the situation, they just got, the town of Situate, working with the superintendent, got over a six hundred thousand dollar grant to work with the schools, particularly the schools, in outreach and drug, and, and especially opiate, but other drugs, alcohol, marijuana, and other educational programs, that's going throughout the grade levels, in particular, sixth through twelve. And I think it, I know it's in the epidemic proportion in our state and on the South Shore, and I would hope that you could add that as a goal, to deal with that situation, as well as other, you know, health concerns. But I think this one really shouts out, is, it's been a real big problem, and it's a big problem for Cohasset right now, as well as other South Shore towns. You know, losing two alumni in just a short period of time, and plus the number of, Chris Murphy was talking, you know, at the conference and other people, about the number of ODs we've had in Cohasset, it's been very frightening. So that's my concern, that we add something like that. And I do appreciate you were already, you know, on the Cohasset Coalition, called Safe Harbors. But it's not just that one area in health, there's other areas too. We talked about stress, you know, the American Psychological Association identified that for students in high school and college, stress-related issues are becoming also a big, huge problem, especially in high-performing towns, that are, according to Boston Magazine, I mean, top twenty, according to other magazines, in the top twelve, or fifteen, or whatever. But it is also a big problem, you know. My colleagues, I don't, I don't purposely see anybody in Cohasset, but my colleagues who are from Newton in my office, see a lot of people from the South Shore, particularly Cohasset and Situate in here, and it's becoming more of an issue, so, you know, the stress of all the things we're talking about, high performance, things like that. So I, I just want a goal dealing with those, that health-related issues. And the only way to coordinate is through your office, because otherwise, it doesn't get done. It needs to be district-wide, especially when it comes to the drug stuff.
Right, I agree with Dr. Lee that I, I would like to see more goals. It's stunning to me that each year, there are less goals on the list. Last year, there were three, the year before that, I believe there were five, this year there were two, that seem to be weighted heavily. The first one in particular, on work that the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction will do, they don't seem to me to be your goals in particular.
They are my goals, they really are. She assists me, but they are my goals, and I'm going to be emphatic about that. Those are my goals.
Well, I want to know how we're going to measure these goals. I'd also like to know how they align with the strategic plan, and because I can't get on the internet to look at the strategic plan and bring it up.
I'd be glad to help you.
It, it never works. And I came in last week for Mr. Fennell to hook me up, and he said, you know, we should probably try and have a repeater in here during meetings, so that we can get on. But I figured it was set, so I didn't bother to ask for that. I'm just, I have to say, I'm a little disappointed.
And I have to say, I'm very disappointed, that you're disappointed, Mrs. Dean. There are seven sub-benchmarks, and there are five, that's twelve goals essentially that I put out there, under two categories. That's more than I've ever, ever had. I've never had so many benchmarks that I have to meet under goals, until this year, and that to me is twelve, and that's an awful lot.
Will we agree to disagree?
Um, I have no problem with, with these goals, I think they're important and strong. I just would add the one about what you're already doing.
That's fine. No, that's fine.
So, and so you could get credit for it, too. Because it's, you know, the superintendent's been sitting on the committee for the opiate situation on the South Shore, in particular, the one for Cohasset, is called Safe Harbors. I think we decided on the name, but-
Is there something in particular that you want to see, that, that's not being addressed here? Because I think we need, if we're going to object to the, to the format and the goals, we need to kind of offer a solution or some guidance.
I don't think that anyone will object, but I would then make-
Well, no, I guess that the question is, is there something specific that's missing?
As I said, I would like to, I would like to see how it aligns with the strategic plan.
How?
Which I can't bring up on my iPad right now.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to do a compare and contrast. As you know, there have been a couple of weighty issues this week in the district, that we didn't receive information on until kind of last minute, so I was concentrating more on that than on this.
Okay, so-
Trying to keep caught up on things that we didn't have until.
I have a question, was there a problem getting on earlier tonight, or yesterday?
I have, I have not been able to get on since I came in this room.
No, but prior to the meeting, were you able to access the goals and access the strategic plan?
Well, not from home, but always from here.
No, but prior to the meeting, were you able to access it and review it?
I read the goals, yes, but I did not call up the strategic plan.
Did you review the strategic plan prior to tonight?
Um, when we first saw it, but we've not discussed it since.
So, so it's fair to say, maybe, and I don't know how this, what, what the action timeline is, is, but you might need a little more time to evaluate the strategic plan against these goals?
Yes.
Um, you obviously circulated the goals early, and we appreciate that. If, if Jean needs a little more time, I think we should give it to her, and is, is there any reason that these need to be finalized tonight, or could they be pushed to the next meeting?
My contract was a little mad.
Okay, there's a fair reason. So they need to, so by contract, we have to have these done by, before October first?
Before October first. We can do them on October first.
Do them on October, you would be okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so to bridge the gap here, I might suggest that if you, Jean, could come in with some concrete suggestions about what might be missing, if anything, after you've had a chance to review the strategic plan more thoroughly, that might be productive.
Sure.
And then, you know, we can have a discussion, if you feel like the, to be added as goals, and you, you would like them to be your goals, then we'll, we'll add it. If you don't, we won't, and like you did, Helene, you suggested an emotional goal, which you accepted.
I won't be able to get it.
Maybe there'll be some that you'll accept there, too, so. But I would say that obviously, this is a working document that we want to hear your goals coming to us. I feel it's a little bit more of a one, should be more of a one-way street from you to us, but at the same time, if we have feedback to you, you're willing to take it, we appreciate that. So let's try to work within this construct, I think that's fair, but if there's something missing, let's address it.
Do you remember right around the time of year we do the strategic plan for Mrs., Superintendent Contalb?
No, but we were using it this weekend, our central office meeting, just looking at what's the problems.
Yeah.
Okay, so perhaps, given the hour and the fact that we can't let it go anywhere with this until we get some more feedback, well, unless there's anything Paul and Mary, you guys wanted to add? Good, good, all right. Well, we add it to next week's agenda, and we'll make sure to finalize on October one.
I found the superintendent's goals for last year.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, we just reviewed those and evaluated them a couple weeks ago.
Right, right, correct.
All right. Thank you-
Thank you.
-for that. I, I guess I'll just say, I, I for one, found them pretty thorough and, and productive, and look forward to, you know, finalizing them with more feedback next week, and see what else needs to be done. Should we move to finance then? We'll, we'll move to the, I guess we have a warrant here, that's probably, Jean, we probably have chats to review.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll make a motion to approve warrant fifteen dash oh for us.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, Helene Lee, yes.
Aye, Jean Stino.
Aye, Paul T.
Aye, Mary Goldner.
Aye, Paul D. The warrant fifteen zero for Sierra is approved.
Thank you.
Monthly update, your doctor includes a monthly update as of August thirty-first, first report of the new year.
Yes.
Not much going on right now, at this point. I do have a revised last page. We made an adjustment on the circuit breaker opening balance, your, your report has a while amount, this is the correct amount. We're still waiting to hear on our kindergarten grant about the approval, and that should be coming any day now.
What, how's the cake control, Greg?
As you know, we've always forecasted, and we've already started for this year, seeing where we're going to be at the end of the year. It's always fun, fun to do, and fun to know where we are. But, you know, we'll talk more about that as time goes on, but right now, I think we're in good shape, because the year just started. You won't see any posting of salaries from the teachers yet on this report, because You won't see any, um, posting of salaries from the teachers yet on this report because they, they, uh, their first pay was posted for September, the beginning of September. So, um, the next report will show more, more thousand dollars, yeah.
Push with it. The usual maximum gas bill that we, we get, when does that hit? The, the month of February?
That's like, yeah, about February for January, February and March, those three months are pretty big, yeah, yeah. So we've locked in this year, starting November, I forget what the latest, but from November through Oc- October of two thousand and sixteen will be locked in. Great. So that'll help us with our forecasting.
Least forecasting.
Yeah. Any other questions at all?
Nope.
Easy start.
So it's an easy hen.
Yes.
The, uh, next item on the finances, maybe FY sixteen's, will be budget calendar? So I'll check out that a bit of the graphics. And this, um, the calendar is, is really similar timeline and what we've done in the past. We can't create the issue of this one. Then we're asking.
To approve the calendar, okay.
I just thought it would come up.
Um, I just have the calendar. This is, okay. Do you mind? Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's in here. Is that one little piece of paper?
I saw it, sorry.
That. All right. You, you have several now.
This is Paul's late. All right, good. So do we have a, I guess it's self-explanatory, it was in there. So, um, the timing works with the, uh, with the town budget calendar and it's all synchronized. So we probably just want a motion to approve the Cohasset Public Schools budget calendar for a year of FY two thousand and sixteen.
Can I just ask one question before we do that? Put a motion on the floor. In terms of, um, comparing this to last year's calendar, are the things identical or are they moved up a little bit?
Well, it depends on, they're close. There may be one or two days, um, difference before or after. Depending on where the days fall.
Okay.
You know, and if, if, if one of these dates fell on a weekend, we would.
Or vacation day, right.
Or vacation, we would adjust it to where it was last year.
Certainly last year, the budget calendar was a little bit.
Lose delay, but partially just because of the town manager getting up to speed and all of those meetings. I think that was largely.
We had a, a similar outline from last year.
I mean, we, we, we try to stick to it as close as we can.
And we can do our job.
Yeah. Well, sometimes it needs.
Got to be good with people too.
The one difference is I don't think we had the town meeting on the calendar last year. We do this year.
I don't think it was scheduled last year.
Yeah, it wasn't scheduled last year. We already know the town meeting is based second.
Town meeting is.
So take care of that.
That's the last one.
At the very last.
Yeah, I saw that. And in terms of special town meeting, which you had put out a notice once about last month, I think. Um, is it enforced at that date beyond there or no?
No, it doesn't impact us for this budget.
And when is, uh, town elections, like for your school board and?
May sixth.
Isn't it the weekend after?
It's the weekend after the town meeting. So it would be the ninth, or town meetings, depends on, it's almost on Sunday, right? So.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would think it'd be the next weekend. Okay.
Next weekend, it usually is.
Don't get too excited, will you?
No, but.
I know. It's always a schedule, isn't it?
A lot of work to do for that.
Yeah, I don't think it's been scheduled yet though.
What?
I don't think it's been scheduled yet.
So the first time we'll hear about it sounds like January seventh is the first, uh, presentation to the House.
Oh, the, the committee, right, correct. Yes, yeah, yeah.
I'm just like to get more.
Okay.
That'll be our first presentation, an overview usually.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, do, are we in a position to have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the budget calendar for FY two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second it.
Two thousand sixteen.
All in favor?
No, right?
Scary.
Very scary.
All, all in favor? Huh?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
It's approved, great. And, uh, any communications from anyone?
I'll just do a real quick one because it's very late. Um, I wasn't able to attend the entire meeting, but there was a, um, coffee yesterday for the CPAC group, uh, which Barbara was at as well. And I was, just wanted to say I was really impressed, um, not only with Mary Buchanan, but with the new team chairs, um, and also with your address as well. It was, um, it was a great group that attended here. And it's, it's really nice things that we think are going to happen. So that was terrific. Thank you.
That's great.
So.
Now, was it the advisory committee? There's, I believe, going to be sixteen warrant articles for the special town meeting. Some of them housekeeping, some of them are, uh, petitions to do with the, um, Elder Affairs Building. And some are disposition of monies. I don't know if that's happened, just, uh, overall for the year. I believe it's one point four, five, five million in free cash that's available for special town meeting.
Oh. Great. And that free cash gets deployed, what's ever left over, back to capital?
Uh, it'll be, uh, special town meeting, depending on how it's allocated, how it's allocated exactly. I think that after last year, pretty most of it into, um, allocated funds. I suspect they'll probably do the same thing. We were talking about two percent holdback for free cash. Um, but it doesn't necessarily need to be done. It could be done all to capital around, uh, funds that will be used as excessive.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Topic's not reasonably anticipated in advance then?
Oh, uh, John Smith Day, I heard was really great. I unfortunately couldn't go because my daughter had some medical issues. But, um, she's okay. But anyway, I heard from Howie that it went great and other people.
Nice.
And John Smith did land, you know, again, a hundred years later. And if you want to check the pavilion, it's really nice.
Yeah, they did a beautiful job.
Yes, it's really, really nice. And the schools, uh, contributed quite a bit of, of work and that was very appreciated. It was a really nice, um, you know, school collaboration, found ground, but, uh, okay.
Excellent. So there's no other than this tonight and we can conclude the meeting if we have a motion to conclude.
A motion to adjourn at ten twenty?
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, David, I was spacing out. Yeah, so, David, I was spacing out. So the difference between this is only in the circuit breaker.
Just the circuit breaker.
And why didn't he get included?
We didn't update the reasonable sheet.
And that's no problem. So that's the only thing.
That's the only.
In the budget, you're just beginning to spend money.
Right, right. Well, July and August are usually the slow months, you know, when everybody gets back and it's.
And it may be like two hundred bucks. We model that, yeah.
I'm sorry.